Time is now 6:00 PM. I'm going to call the Vacaville City Council meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Council Agency Authority members Sullivan, Stockton, Ritchie, Silva,
Here.
Wiley, Vice Mayor Vice Chair Roberts, Mayor Chair Roulet.
I am here. If you can, please stand with me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. City Manager. I do believe there's some changes to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to pull items nine C is in Charlie and nine D is in David from tonight's agenda. Those will be put on a future agenda that we will notify you of a future date.
Okay, with the changes, can I have a motion, please? I have a motion, second. Can we have a roll call? We do have to do that, thanks to Silva.
Councilmember Stockton? Councilmember Ritchie? Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley? Councilmember Sullivan? Vice Mayor Roberts? Mayor Roulet?
Yes. Item four, approval of minutes. I'll entertain motion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ritchie? Councilmember Silva? Councilmember Wiley? Vice Mayor Roberts? Councilmember Sullivan? Councilmember Stockton? Mayor Roulet?
Aye. Okay, no presentations tonight. We do, we will move to the consent calendar. Is there anyone from the council that would like to pull any item off the consent calendar?
I would like to...
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to pull item six D, Foxborough Knowles Final Map, because I live within 500 feet of the project site. So I have been informed by the city attorney that because it's on the consent calendar, I can remain in the room during that vote. But I would like to remove it just so that we can vote on that separately. And I would not vote on six D, but I would on the remainder of the consent calendar.
Great, thank you for the explanation. I'm going to open it up to the public. Does anybody from the public want to pull any item from the consent calendar tonight? I'll close public comment. I'll entertain motion for six A through G minus D. I have a motion, the second. Can we have a roll call vote, please? He wasn't prepared for that one.
Hello?
You're on. Whoop, you're off, you're on.
Councilmember Silva? Councilmember Wiley? Vice Mayor Roberts? Councilmember Sullivan? Councilmember Stockton? Councilmember Ritchie? Mayor Roulet?
Yes. Okay, I will take item 10. Do I need to open another public comment? Because we, I mean, not, yeah, sixty. I don't know why it said ten. It sounded like a great number. Do I have to let the public comment since we pulled it?
No.
Then I'll entertain motion for D. Thank you. All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Wiley? Oh, I'm sorry.
We don't rehearse.
Vice Mayor Roberts? Councilmember Sullivan? Councilmember Stockton? Councilmember Ritchie? Councilmember Silva? Mayor Roulet?
Yes. All right. We're going to move to item seven. This is business from the floor. This is the time to address the council on issues that are not on this agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction. Do I have anybody from the public that wants to speak? Great, come on up. I will turn your mic on. Yes.
I'm actually here today to advocate on behalf of the houseless community of Vacaville. For a year now, they've gone without a warming or a cooling shelter. And last week, as I'm sure you all saw, Vacaville saw temperatures of over 101 degrees for more than two consecutive days. Temperatures reached 106 degrees on one day, and it's only June. So it's going to get hotter. The city needs a plan to prevent people from dying of heat exhaustion and dehydration. The city needs to open a cooling shelter that provides a cool place to shelter from the heat, clean water and showers. That is what our houseless community members have specifically told us that they are in dire need of. For nearly two years now, caring community members have done what the city of Vacaville fails to do, and that's provide actual resources for the houseless. Without a cooling shelter this summer, people will die. And the city would be held responsible for that. And I want to also note, this is not on my actual notes that I wrote for here, but while I have time, it's critical that we don't just open cooling shelters just because there's a few consecutive days of 100-degree temperature. People are still going to die and have died in the past in Sacramento, Vacaville, when temperatures reach 90 to 100 degrees. We need a cooling shelter in the summer, and we need a warming shelter in the winter, and it should be as simple as that. And I find it abhorrent that that would not be opened had advocates not come and asked for it to be opened. So I'm really coming to you here to find your compassion and think of people who would lose their lives if you guys do not act, if you fail to act. And before I close, I also want to note that I noticed the city no longer has a remote option to tune into city council meetings, although Councilmember Silva can still tune in remotely. And I think that that's unfair, and that all the people who still cannot leave their homes due to COVID and being a mutual compromise should be able to have an option to tune into the city council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
So a quick response to your comment. We don't usually respond back during open comment because it's not agenda. But tomorrow, there is a public meeting on homelessness in the city of Vacaville and Salona County. Councilmembers Stockton and myself are hosting it. We'd love to have you there. It's 3:30 on Zoom. So we're standing that back up for the first time in about a year. It's the City of Vacaville Homeless Roundtable. So I appreciate the comments, and hopefully you can come tomorrow to join in with a larger group that's trying to work towards homeless action. So tomorrow on Zoom, it's on Facebook. It's on the city's main page. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Councilmember, I appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to close public comment, and we'll move to item eight A.
Okay, it's... And I'm just here... And I'm here because I also wanted to emphasize that point, make sure you get three different perspectives on the same kind of issue, I guess. Seeing as the resources for our houseless communities across Salona County are few and far between, the fact that the city of Vacaville has shut down Georgie Duke as a place to seek shelter during temperature extremes is a bit of a low blow. Vacaville is notably hot. We all know that. It's really hot here. And it's more so than any other city in the county. And there's no building for somebody without a home to escape record heat waves. Not to mention, we get hard freezes in the winter. Everybody who does have a house gets warned about these hard freezes, but people like us have a place to go seek shelter because we have homes. When one considers that it was more expensive to shut down the warming center at Georgie Duke and to displace those staying there than it was to keep it up and running, it kind of sends a negative message to those in the community who are concerned for our houseless neighbors and for those who are houseless. And I just want to know what plan the city has in place to help, because I'm not aware of one, nor is anybody I know. And I don't think a cooling shelter should come after weeks and weeks of record highs and record temperature highs and this drought, heat wave. It's supposed to be a preventative measure, you know? So that's something we'd like to see.
Thank you.
Hi. I also support everything that's already been said, but I do want to say your police department is routinely sweeping people that are just trying to sleep and maybe work up enough energy to find shade in this hot, hot, hot city. Every week, I help these people. I give them toothbrushes, food, blankets, jackets, all that good stuff that you need to survive day-to-day life and feel like a human being, right? And if they're gonna, you know, I'm sure many people have negative feelings about homeless people saying that they should get jobs. I'm not going to a job interview if I don't have a toothbrush to clean my teeth. So just to put in perspective of the work that I do every week in your city, in Andrews Park. Every single week, we're rolling up on people that are nearly passed out due to heat exhaustion. They down their water bottles in about five seconds flat. We try to give them sunscreen, but at the end of the day, sunscreen doesn't really help you with sun cancer. But just focusing on sweeps, it's not helpful and it is very violent to have anyone wake you up and say, "You can't sleep here." And I don't care where you go. I don't care that you don't have anywhere to go, and I don't care that you're disabled or elderly or limping or whatever. I don't care. You can't stay here or you will go to jail. I don't know if anyone here has been to jail. It's not great. And it's not, um, it's not something that helps you get ahead in life. It's actually quite the barrier and quite the obstacle. So if you could just tell your officers to maybe let people sleep, that would be nice. It is very violent to just kick them out and have them hopping all over town because you're not getting rid of them. They might be out of sight, but they are just dying somewhere else. So I'm just here to advocate for their humanity, their health, their well-being. And oh, about the meeting tomorrow, if any of us don't end up making it just because of unforeseen circumstances, I would hope that you guys would pass the message for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. And we'll move to item eight A, Mr. City Manager.
So, Mr. Mayor, this item is being continued until the next meeting of June 28th.
Okay. Nine A, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Members of the city councils. So this first item for the council's consideration is an update on the public review draft report of the city's development impact fees. Gwen Owens, our traffic engineer, and our consultant from EPS are here to make a presentation for the council.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Gwen Owens, city of, clearly, city of Vacaville, city traffic engineer. I'm here with Tyfeon Rice-Evans from EPS, and we are going to give you an update on the AB 1600 process.
All right, thank you. Good evening, mayor, city council members. Yeah, so we're going to, a presentation overview, going to talk a little bit about the background to our development impact fee update study, talk a little bit about the public outreach and stakeholder feedback we received, and then provide you with the updated results on the impact fees. And then Gwen, we'll discuss some of the policy issues that have arisen. Next slide, please, Gwen. So just as a reminder, as you all know, general plan, your general plan was updated in 2015. Purpose is in part to guide all the growth in your city. Of course, with the new growth comes the need for substantial investments in infrastructure and capital facilities. And the general plan is very clear on the fact that new growth should pay its own way in terms of its need, its proportional need for infrastructure and capital facility investments. The impact fee is the, is a kind of primary tool by which we capture, we capture those revenues from new development. Thanks. What is the development impact fee? These are one-time charges on new developments. They are designed and structured under the State of California Mitigation Fee Act. They can provide funding for infrastructure and capital facility fee, infrastructure and capital facilities investments. They cannot fund existing deficiencies, and they cannot fund operations and maintenance spending. What is a NEXUS study? So a NEXUS study is the study under which we, we craft and make the findings required under the State Mitigation Fee Act. So it kind of gives us the discipline around which we develop our fees. The, the study findings and the development of the capital improvement programs must be tied to city policies, city service standards, city plans. And in the kind of more nuanced language of the NEXUS study, we have to identify the need for, the purpose of, and the proportionality of the impact fees. And that's all kind of in the NEXUS study that I believe you have. Importantly, the NEXUS study establishes the maximum justifiable fees. As I think you've spoken about, there's policy flexibility to charge fees below the maximum, if you so choose. Next slide, please. So yeah, back in 1992, you established a comprehensive fee program. You established it under these, these several categories. On the slide here, please, five. General facilities, parks and recreation facilities, green belt preservation, transportation, water, water capacities, sewer capacity and storm drain. And those are the same set of fees that we've updated this time around in 2022. Let's see. So on the public outreach front, very early on, led by, led by city staff, very early on, they met with the three engineering firms that do the majority of projects here in the city. We released, some point after that, we released the public review draft of the NEXUS study, put it on the website, so fully available to everyone to see. And then we did a fee update presentation to stakeholders on April 26th. And beyond that, the, the staff in particular had done stakeholder meetings on May 10th, 17th, 24th and 31st, and an additional requested meeting on May 16th. The stakeholder feedback, kind of, at least in summary format, stakeholders felt like the California drive over crossing in the Vacaville extension projects should be removed from the fee program. They also indicated that Midway Road should not be for lanes and should not include bike lanes, curb, gutter and sidewalk. They also intimated that the parks fee should be reduced. They were in favor of the staff suggestion of the removal of the CBC fee. And also, they were supportive of the tiering or the kind of proportionality between the size of the homes and the fee levels. So the latest, based on some of the feedback, some adjustments, we have here now the kind of the revised set of impact fees, updated impact fees for you to see organized by land use. For single-family, because we have this tiered system here, I'm showing you the average, the fees on the average single-family homes. So that's a single-family home in the 2,000 to 3,000 square foot range. As you can see, the existing fee is about $45,200 under the maximum justifiable new fee. That could increase to $53,000. There's an increase of about 17% driven by, well, you can see, some fees go up, some fees go down. Parks fees is the one that goes up the most significantly in this particular case. Next slide, please. And just to kind of give the context here, we have five different sized categories. So what I just showed you is for the middle category. If you're in the smaller categories, your fees are below the ones I showed you and are actually below the existing fees. If you're in the, if you're in the larger categories, your fees will be higher than the ones I showed you, and that's all laid out in the NEXUS study. On the multifamily front, we also saw, this case, a modest increase in fees. It was, maximum fees was determined about $33,500 versus $31,700, so an overall increase of 6%. That's enough on that one. Commercial had a more substantial increase, that's an 80% increase overall from about $16,500 per thousand square feet of commercial development up to $29,900 per thousand square feet of commercial development. That change was mainly driven by the, an increase in the transportation fee. And then finally, on the industrial side, industrial fees did go up by 10% from $7,700 per 1,000 square feet to $8,500 per 1,000 square feet, driven again in smaller part by the transportation fee increase.
Thank you. So at the last council meeting, we also discussed policy decisions with regards to the AB 1600. So I'm just going to briefly go over the policy direction and what staff is doing with that. So the first policy direction is to remove the community benefit district. The direction was for staff to initiate revisions to development agreements within 90 days of approval of the AB 1600. Sorry about that. What we're planning on doing is, when we come back on the 28th for approval of the actual fees, we will provide a timeframe for completion of the amendments to the development agreements. So the next policy decision is for incentives for certain types of target industries. So the recommendation was to direct staff to provide a program for targeted industries, specifically industries such as biotech, advanced manufacturing, and also high, high-density residential projects under 1,000 square feet. We will return on, on June 28th to provide a timeframe for completion of this, of the incentive program. The next policy direction would be regarding infill projects. So the direction was to staff for the two priority development areas, which is the downtown area and the Allison U. Lattice priority development areas, that we would, staff would update our municipal code so that there would be a fee reduction because there's existing infrastructure. The fee reduction would not apply to storm drains facilities, green belt facilities, and the regional component of the parks and rest portion of the fee because those, those improvements aren't existing in those areas. So for instance, if you build something, there's still an impact to the storm drain. So we will come back on the 28th to provide a time, timeframe for completion of the municipal code. The next one is basically, is how we deal with fee credits and reimbursements. And city council directed us to update the municipal code to, while it's in there, to basically refine it a little bit more and be clearer in regards to the direction of how that happens. And we will come back on the 28th to provide you a timeframe for the completion of the update to the municipal code. And then the next one is in regards to the timing of the proposed fees. So basically, city council had directed us to, oh, so basically, city council directed staff to update a phasing program with the implementation of the development impact fees. And they directed staff to have the updated fees with, to be completed to concur with the removal of the CBC. So basically, what we will do is we will come back on the 28th with regards to what our plan is for that. So what our next steps are to incorporate whatever guidance city council has to provide to us tonight. We will continue answering questions. We will finalize the NEXUS study, prepare the appropriate ordinances, resolutions, and we are planning on coming back by June 28th, on June 28th for adoption. That completes the presentation. So if there's questions, comments, we are available.
Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council. And I will give it over to Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. A couple of comments. Great job getting there over the last couple of meetings. We're slowly but surely dialing it in, and I appreciate you taking all the feedback and all the bits and pieces moving forward. Quick comment on the California Drive removal. Strongly, strongly disagree with that. Alamo Drive on that portion of town is an absolute freeway. It's extremely dangerous. There's dozens, if not hundreds, of low-income families that are sort of shoehorned into very high-density housing along Alamo there. And it's very unsafe. I think California Drive would alleviate a lot of the pressure from people leaving AD and getting to Jeanette's District or getting into, you know, kind of the Down Peabody Road, kind of Fairfield area. So I'd actually like to put some gas on that project. And if, you know, I'm still here for the next four years, that's going to be a priority I'm going to try and push. We're getting lots of different issues and complaints with that. So I'm a really strong proponent of that project, and frankly, I want to pull it from the back burner to the front burner. So please leave that in. Councilman Roberts might, might agree with that notion as well. That stretch of Alamo is very dangerous. We've got to relieve some of that pressure. So I'm totally opposed to removing that. The second, we had lots of comments and ideas, and I think that we're getting closer and closer to that point. Really quick question. Did you reduce the park fee from the last time we talked? Was there a reduction in the proposal between last meeting and this meeting? And why was that?
It was, it was reduced approximately $4,000. Basically, during the stakeholders' meetings, it was brought up that the city had actually undeveloped parkland. And then the other thing is, they had questioned the dollar amount per acres. And so what we did is, we went back, we worked with parks to determine what land we actually owned and realized that the amount of acreage is actually dropped about 100 acres of what we needed to acquire. So that was a significant decrease in the cost. The second one is, we had a cost of $400,000 per acre. And that was what, if you bought a papered lot, a paper lot is a lot that has an approval on it for a single-family house. That's approximately how much they run, is $4,000 an acre. But after talking with EPS, because we have land that's identified as parkland, and so that's its designation, it's a significantly lower value. So what we did is, we defaulted to the Parks and Rec master plan cost of $250,000 per acre. So those were the two big costs for the reductions. And that, that feedback came from conversations with the stakeholders.
So, so we're basing that on those calculations, which makes sense. Do we have latitude to say, even though we understand that, we still want to go higher?
I'll let Tyfeon answer that.
Hit your mic, please.
Sorry. Yeah, no, that's, I think those adjustments, based on kind of, you know, an adjusted and improved land value, land cost calculation, as well as the land we have, means that really what we're presenting to you is the new maximum number. So the, kind of the maximum allowable fee has gone down. So we can't go above that on the kind of NEXUS, NEXUS logic, if you will.
So I'm, I'm kind of looking for a solid yes or no. So is that the maximum fee we can charge for Parks and Rec at this point, based on the law? The council has no ability to say, "Go higher."
That's right.
Got it, okay, cool, thank you. The reason I say that is, the stakeholder group was primarily developers and landowners and folks that want it cheap, right? And so the people moving into these complexes or these new houses that don't have parks for 10 or 15 years, they, they want their parks. And we're not giving those parks to them. And so part of my concern is that if we're letting the development community dictate sort of the park fee there, they're always going to want to have that as cheap as possible because it means more profit. But it doesn't mean parks for kids and families, and that's what concerns. But if you're saying that's the max we can go for, that's, that's the max. Okay, cool. We've just, we've atrophied our park system, and we got to carry some support. We got to get some funding there. So no, no more Cordero's Park, you know, 10, 15-year builds. We just, we got to stop doing that. The, the last two, and I had similar questions last time, and maybe, maybe you have some thoughts between now and last time. Is there any opportunity, and this might be more in the larger housing discussion or the housing strategy, is there anything with a fee nexus in regards to incentivizing more low-income or subsidized housing or recouping fees for the city to build or have money for our low-income housing fund to build more low-income housing? Is there anything in this? And I don't think there was a huge catalyst or nexus last time, but was there anything in your, your studies over the last couple of weeks where maybe there's a nexus there or not?
So basically, if you want to subsidize low-income housing, it's really a policy decision on, you can, so these are the maximum fees. You can choose to certain industries or certain product types that you want to facilitate. You can choose to actually have a lower fee for that particular one. So that is an option.
Okay, and when would that discussion happen, City Manager? Where would that be appropriate?
Well, so I'm, I'm going to expand upon that answer a little bit and say that, you know, one of the efforts that we're currently working on is the housing strategy. And so that is absolutely intended to focus on how do we meet all the different housing demands here in the city? And currently, we do not have a, a fee mechanism And currently, we do not have a, a fee mechanism or an inclusionary zoning ordinance provision for affordable housing. And that is something that we have to address as part of that housing strategy. So my recommendation would be that, you know, we move forward with this particular study, and then we bring the housing strategy back to council, and we have that conversation about, you know, how do we promote more affordable housing in the community? Then that would be the appropriate time to talk about what kind of mechanisms we would need to put in place in order to achieve the successful implementation of that product type.
Got it, got it. Okay. And I have three more questions, and I apologize. So my next question is, so this just came up with Allison Apartments project. So the project obviously paid its fees, and tons of fees went into building this very dense housing project, which is great because we need it, it's low-income housing. The problem is we're, we're funneling all of those folks into a neighborhood park. So A, the resources for the new families is not great because it's just not, it's very limited, and then B, you have a very small neighborhood park now that is being, you know, the population's almost tripling, that of folks using the park. How, what dictates where the fees go in terms of what parks are recommended? Like what, what determined where the fees paid at Allison Apartments hit that neighborhood park versus, hey, let's build a new park versus, hey, let's go somewhere else? What, what triggers that or what directs that?
So basically, we collect fees over, you know, continuously. Each year when we do our budgets, and this is same thing for, you know, whether it's sewer, water, transportation, or parks, is we identify, we have so much money in the bank, and these are the projects that we want to work on. So when the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program comes forward, those are where the, it basically is our plan for the near term. So if those projects are of high priority, that's something that City Council would like to provide input to staff of, these are the projects we'd like to move forward. But whatever money I have in parks, I can't use it, I can't take transportation money and use it for parks, so it, it depends upon how much money we actually have.
But the fees go into a fee bucket, if you will, if you spend for Parks and Rec throughout?
Correct.
Okay, and that's determined by the SIP and the Parks and Rec. Okay, got it. All right. So my last two questions, sorry. My, my last two questions, one of the other issues that I am a little bit concerned about, and this is kind of the same question, but with two components. The first is I, I like the multifamily component. I think there should be a reduced fee for that. Obviously, we want more multifamily. We're running out of land, we've got to build denser, we've got to build higher, it just has to happen. My first question, though, is I, I'd rather give people an opportunity to own. And so is there any ability within the fee structure for, if you're building a multifamily project, the single owner occupied, right? Condos, townhomes, things people can live in, they can own, they can build equity, they could pay themselves, not pay a landlord? Can we incentivize a fee to be less for a private ownership property versus a planned rental that's just going to some investment bank or some, some person, some landlord? Is there the ability to distinguish between those two types of multifamily properties? The tail end of that question is how do we incentivize through the fee system more condos, townhomes, and PUDs? Is there a way to do that through the fee structure? So it's kind of a related question, but kind of separate?
So it basically goes to the same answer as the affordable housing. It's a policy decision of City Council of how they'd like to choose to incentivize certain products. If you have a product that you incentivize somebody to be a homeowner, there has to be a whole bunch of rules and regulations associated with that because I could buy it and then I could rent it, and that's not the, that's not the purpose of what you want. You want people to be homeowners.
Right. Okay. Gotcha. So this is, this is an unrelated but sort of related step, and that'll all come at a later date. Okay, awesome. Thank you for all the hard work and the explanations. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Wiley.
Thanks for the information. I do have a follow-up on California Drive. I also believe that it would be not a good idea to remove it from the project because the traffic is really bad, particularly along Alamo. All the council members did get an email today from Tom Philippi, and one of, they did talk a little bit about California Drive, saying it would have low-traffic volumes or it wouldn't have significant benefits. And I just wanted to know if you wanted to address that, or, I mean, where did they get that information, or do you agree with that? Because we feel like, you know, just looking at the traffic, that it would make a big difference to be able to take some of that traffic off of Alamo.
So as part of, when we first, for the transportation portion, when we first developed the fees, if we had both of those projects fully loaded, the fees would be significantly higher, and we realized that that was going to be an issue. So we looked at options to how to reduce the fees. So basically, what we did is we had our traffic consultant do some sensitivity analysis with the travel demand model, which basically predicts where people are going to go, you know, where they live, where they, where they're going to go, whether, whether at school or work, and how they're going to get there. And basically, what we came up with is it's not necessarily needed today or tomorrow. It will probably, it's part of the general plan, and it was analyzed as part of the general plan, so that, that's what determined that there was a need for it, but that's why we decided we were only going to put design and construction, excuse me, design and environmental and right-of-way in the fee program and not construction. So that, that information came from a sensitivity analysis that we did.
And that's where it currently is, the same way it is, was just not, not having construction fees in, but leaving the rest of the fees in?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then another question that I had, we talked about capital facilities as one of the things that people spend money on. And just in South part of Vacaville, District 6, there are very few amenities besides houses, houses, houses. And people have said, we need a senior center, we need a youth center, and I know you can't just build those overnight, but, and we need, those could also serve as a cooling shelter, a heating shelter, or things like that. So just, I do feel like, you know, we need to charge as much as we can without, you know, going to the place where the fees become prohibitively. And so there was one chart that showed the different towns, and then kind of how the fees compared, and then it was a little different because some of them had bonds and some of them didn't. So can you just kind of summarize in a sentence or two, how, how would these new fees be comparable to Fairfield, Vallejo, Dixon, you know, the areas around us?
Good question.
Because they need to be done because they haven't been done for like 20 years or something. So we need to make a jump, but if we make this jump, are we jumping higher than everybody else?
Yeah, no, great question, and it does, like you say, there's, there's some, some noise in the numbers, right? Because you have different fee schedules for different land uses.
Right.
But looking at single-family and, and as, as yourself, you kind of know, in the, with Vacaville, the plus, taking away the CBC, is that, did you have that before? Did you have that after? That makes a difference to where you stand. I think that in terms of where you stand, for example, relative to Vacaville, I mean, sorry, Fairfield, Fairfield has kind of its main city area, and then it has a northeast growth area, and the northeast growth area pays, you know, a fee that's substantially higher than the rest of the city. So your fees right now are kind of similar to where the city of Fairfield's fees are today. They will go up a little, well, you will be kind of moving up, not as high as the northeast area in between. That said, the city of Fairfield is also going through an update as we speak, so it's hard sometimes to know. These are all very dynamic. I think in terms of some other cities, the city of Brentwood, for example, is another one we looked at where you will be below, still below, close to.
Still below after that.
Still below after that. And then some, some cities, some other cities we looked at in the Sacramento County area, many of which have, you know, have, have specific kind of growth area fees that push them higher. You'll be, you'll be below kind of the city of Elk Grove, the city of Rancho Cordova, and the city of Woodlands, that all have citywide fees, but their main growth areas also have additional kind of infrastructure fees. So you, I think you'll be edging above Fairfield and City of American Canyon, for example, but be below some other, other cities. So it's a, kind of a complicated mosaic.
But it's not putting us way up in top?
Right.
Out of line or anything? They would be kind of in line with other things.
Yeah, I think you would be somewhere in the middle of, of those cities.
And then just the last comment was one of the other communications that we all received was talking about the park fee, and I know we did raise, drop it from what the maximum was, but they were advocating for, you know, lowering the fees and then let the developer build the park. But I have some concerns about that because I think that it would be hard to get the uniform, you know, the parks that we want if we said, okay, developer, you know, build the park, unless we were very careful about that. So is there much traction with letting the developer build the park or?
So in the past, developers have built turnkey parks, and there are a few turnkey parks that are in process. So it's, it's something that there is, I want to say, an informal process. There's some stuff written down in the municipal code. It isn't specifically detailed out, so that's one of the things that we've have committed to the development community, is that we would provide more written direction, that's documented, approved, et cetera, on how, how that process is completed. So if, if they choose to do it, they can, but it be consistent with the city.
And then if they choose to do that, then their Parks and Rec fees would be waived or lower or something?
So typically, they, so you pay whatever your fees are, so those fees, if you're going to build the park, what will, what could happen is you wouldn't be charged those fees, and if it, the park served a bigger area than your area, then you might get some fee credit. Also, it just depends upon the size of development, how big a park you're building, what amenities you're building, et cetera.
Because I like the idea of a turnkey park and having that before, you know, you have 300 homes and they're still waiting on their park. So I don't object to that. I just want to make sure that if we allow the developer to build a park, they're building a park that we want, not a minimal park. All right, thanks very much.
You'd put it in a development agreement, exactly what you wanted.
Right.
Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, some of our development agreements are more than 25 years old, so I know that a turnkey park is not always a reality or something that can even be considered. That being said, with the fees being higher in the northeast, east growth sector, is there a way that we could put into policy that the parks that are part of the plans for the different neighborhoods or specific plans for different areas have to be built before those funds can go into the general park fund to, you know, rehabilitate existing parks while the communities that are paying the substantially higher fee don't even have a park? Is there a way that we can put that into this plan?
So basically, the fees that we collect for developer, developer impact fees, they are separate from, they, they can't be used for maintenance, so it can only be used for park improvement. So like if you have raw property to improve the park or purchase land, we're not allowed to use it for operations and maintenance.
But you can do it to build it.
To build it, correct.
Right. So can that be separated by district until the initial parks that have been in, that are in a plan, an approved plan?
So, once again, I would say that that would have to be a policy decision. So the, the purpose of this is just to identify what the fee is and for us to collect it. And as you saw with just the policy directions that I had gone over briefly earlier, there's a lot of policies that we can make, and that can be a policy and that can be talked about at a future council meeting.
Yeah, I would be interested to hear if we could do that, to make sure everybody has their park before we all put money into the general park fund to maintain all of the city's parks. That's all I have.
9B, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item is your Part II presentation of the budget's, the city's budget. And as soon as we get our team down here, we'll kick into that. Okay, well, I get to start this off, but then I'll turn it over to our talented budget team. So thank you. This is the beginning of our second study session on the budget for fiscal 22, 23. Developing the budget, the city's budget is comprised of many pieces, as you well know. All of our departments have been working on this very diligently. We essentially have seven to 11 different companies, if you will, and comprised in this one budget, and it makes up one budget. Historically, we rely on the prior year's budget, and supplement and adjustments are needed through the budget augmentation request process. For last year's, or this year's current budget, fiscal 21, 22, it was based on an open-for-business approach. It was better-than-expected economic recovery in Solano County and renewed optimism about city revenues bouncing back. This is different than the prior year's budget when we were at the height of the pandemic and we had a cautious and strategic approach. Again, as part of this year's budget, we were reopening City Hall for more business than usual, and we were reconnecting with our community through new investment improvements, programs, and events. Next slide, please. The proposed budget is developed utilizing the filing, following priorities. The city of Vacaville's strategic plan, all of its goals and initiatives. The continued successful implementation of existing city programs and services, which are aimed at maintaining appropriate levels of resources, materials, and supplies, including technology and software needs. Expansion and creation of new city programs and services, addressing immediate and long-term areas of concern, such as staffing, utility rates, park maintenance, district funding, and pension obligations. And then finally, mandates from other regulatory agencies and city insurance providers. Next slide, please. So developing the budget for this upcoming fiscal year, we, we took a different approach, and that's building for the future. The reason for that is, is that we wanted to address all the, the hard parts of, of your budget process, looking at the structural and foundational budget issues. We're doing this because we had a quicker-than-expected economic recovery, general fund surplus, but we also have to wrestle with some new challenges, inflation and supply chain issues. The big picture is our goal is of addressing quality of life and those structural and foundational challenges. The focus of our new budget for this year is increasing building capacity to be responsive to our strategic plan and the service levels expected by our residents. We are proposing, as part of this budget that we shared with you in the first session, an augmentation of 25 new full-time equivalent positions. This helps us get back to pre-Great Recession staffing levels, but it also helps us remain fiscally responsible. And by doing so, we're addressing our pension costs, and we're tackling those tough issues of, looking at those subsidies that we routinely had to provide in past budgets. And so we came to the council and asked if we could tackle those big issues and begin doing some studies. And so with the council's blessing, we will be looking at doing studies and evaluations of our park maintenance, our landscape lighting districts, as well as utility rates. We also intend to continue reconnecting with our community through our continued investments and improvements in those programs and services, especially using Measure M funding. For this year, we are proposing that we finish those $9 million in Measure M park improvement projects. We continue with the neighborhood cleanup program, as well as our downtown specific plan improvements, as well as youth scholarship programs. We are also focusing on our new community engagement and communications plans, as well as new equity, diversity, inclusionary efforts, as well as, and then lastly, our apprenticeship program. And then finally, our biotech initiative, moving into Phase 4, which includes the northeast growth sector. Next slide, please. So with that, I'm now going to turn it over to Ken Matsumiya, our Finance Director, who's going to give you a brief update and then turn it over to his team.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Before I turn it over to our budget analyst, John Colette, to go over the next section of the budget presentation, I just wanted to call out an update that we made to the draft budget document that was posted online. It's an update that we made actually yesterday, on Monday, and that was to increase the Measure M budget by $2.2 million, and this is related to, if you recall, for the budget study session number one, we proposed a strategy of making a $2.2 million payment next year to pay down the unfunded liability faster and to save on interest costs. And so this amount wasn't included in the original budget document that we posted online last week. We just made that update yesterday, and so apologize for any confusion that might have caused for anybody who looked at the, the document over the week and then, again, over the past two days. So I'll pass it on to John.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. As the City Manager mentioned, this is the second study session for our fiscal year 23 budget. To recap what was covered in the first session held on May 25th, we discussed the development of next year's budget, the big picture, or addressing the quality of life, foundational and structural issues within the city, the CalPERS additional discretionary payment, the recommended budget augmentations for the upcoming year, which have been incorporated into the draft budget document, next year's budget projection for Measure M, and ended with the five-year general fund forecast. Tonight's agenda will include a summary of proposed operating budget. Then we will move into presentations from each department highlighting the divisions and services provided, significant changes in the upcoming year, and recommended augmentations. We'll pause for questions and comments related to the operating budget, and then move on to the capital improvement program budget portion of the presentation. The next two slides show how the proposed operating budget is allocated amongst the city's departments. The city's proposed operating budget is $257,054,500 for fiscal year 2023. The successor agency operating budget to pay down annual obligations of the former redevelopment agency is $7,453,328. The pie chart on the right shows the percentage of the total operating budget that resides in each department. Starting at the top and moving clockwise, the elected and admin category is 7%, and this includes departments such as the City Manager's Office, City Attorney, Human Resources, and Economic Development. Housing and successor agency is 15%, Parks and Rec 4%, and with Parks and Rec, it's important to note that the pie chart of the operating budget doesn't include large capital improvements, such as the Measure M park improvements approved in fiscal year 22. That budget would be included in the capital improvement program budget presented at the end of this presentation. Police is 19% of the total operating budget, fire 14%, public works 12%, utilities, sewer water 25%, and then community development and non-apartmental 2% each. On this slide, the chart on the left shows the operating budget based on fund type. The general fund, which is the main operating fund for the city, is our largest fund at 51% in the dark blue, or slightly under $137 million. The enterprise fund, which is in the gray, which includes utilities, operations, and transit, is the second-largest fund at 26% or $68.3 million, followed by the special, the special revenue funds in the dark orange, $52.1 million or 20%, and which includes departments funded by revenues restricted for a particular purpose, such as grants. Examples of the departments in this category are housing and community development. And the last fund is the successor agency at $7.5 million or 3% of the total operating budget. The pie chart on the right is similar to the, to the, to the one shown on the previous slide, but is specifically related to the general fund departments and the approximately, and how the approximately $137 million from the blue chart is allocated. So starting at the top going clockwise again, city administration is at 13%, non-depart- percent, Non-Departamental five percent, um, and there's a call-out for Non-Departamental, a two percent increase from last fiscal year, and this has to, is directly related to the two-point-two million dollars, uh, CalPERS additional discretionary payment. Public Works is at ten percent, Police thirty-seven percent, which, as you can see, is a two percent decrease from last fiscal year, or from this fiscal year, I guess. Parks and Rec is at eight percent, and the Fire Department twenty-seven percent. The next portion of the presentation will be department presentations, and I will now pass it on to our City Attorney, Melinda Stewart, to kick it off.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I am happy to start off the department presentations with my department, the City Attorney's Office. So, our office is currently comprised of seven employees, four attorneys, and three support staff, and with those seven employees, we do provide a wide range of legal services. For example, we advise the council, the commissions, uh, the eleven departments. We prepare and review resolutions and ordinances. We negotiate, prepare, and review contracts and other legal documents. We manage claims and litigation. Uh, we, we, uh, our attorneys defend litigation in some circumstances, and we also oversee outside counsel. Uh, we prosecute court, code enforcement actions, and we research and prepare legal opinions, uh, on a variety of legal matters. So, some significant changes that have happened in the past year, um, thanks to council and staff support, uh, as a result of the last budget cycle and one, uh, mid-year budget augmentation, we have expanded, uh, our office by two new positions. We added a deputy city attorney, and we added an executive, uh, administrative assistant, and we reclassified our existing legal secretary to a paralegal. And this is allowing us to commit some effort to creating, uh, general office and workflow efficiencies and, uh, more effectively manage and increasing, uh, and varied workload. Uh, also with the addition of new staff, we're able to rethink our office structure a little bit, so for, um, you know, ever since I've been here, all the attorneys have provided services to all of the departments. And so, beginning, uh, approximately the start of the next fiscal year, we'll be designating attorneys to specific departments, so each department will have their own attorney and a backup attorney, uh, with hopes that that develops some, some expertise, uh, in certain areas and, um, develops those strong bonds and relationships with the, with the departments. At this point, uh, recommended aug- augmentations, we did ask for one position, another attorney that would, uh, assist us in providing some proactive, uh, legal work, um, but after discussions, uh, with staff and evaluations of other city needs, uh, there is no, uh, augmentation request, uh, for this budget cycle from our office. Uh, Measure M funding, we do not receive any, um, and we're not using any Measure M funding, and our total operating budget is approximately two million dollars. And that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to turn it over to the City Manager's Office, I believe, Georgiana Comiger Smith.
Thank you. Wait, we didn't get you on. Have to go all the way back, sorry. There we go.
All right. Good evening. The City Manager's Office is the hub of City Hall, supporting the City Council and providing administrative support and direction to all city departments. The City Manager's Office is comprised of twenty-seven full-time employees and several different divisions. The City Clerk Support Services Division supports the City Council, manages the agenda packet process, and administers the election process, city public records requests, and legislative actions ensuring transparency to the public. The Programs Division includes citywide project and program management, including the Council District Benefit Program, Measure M, and the Broadband Master Plan, just to name a few. The Public Relations Division is responsible for public outreach, community engagement, public meeting broadcasts, and all media relations. Uh, Risk Management works closely with the City Attorney's Office, um, and includes administration of the city's insurance policies, insurance and contract compliance, and recovery claims and management. Last but definitely not least is the Information Technology Division, which is the largest division within City Manager's Office, and that's comprised of fourteen full-time employees. IT provides twenty-four-seven support to all city staff across all departments, and the team is about to start work on year three of the five-year technology, technology strategic plan, the GIS master plan, and they're also working on the broadband master plan, which is expected to be completed in September. There are no significant changes planned within the department for the upcoming year. And under recommended augmentations, uh, the electronic content management system was originally on the unfunded list, but we are throwing that back into the pot for this year as we are hoping to move, uh, forward with that process sooner than originally planned, so during the next fiscal year. Uh, we also have an augmentation for public outreach tools for the Public Relations Division, along with a non-full-time, uh, bilingual program coordinator and an outreach intern to help us engage the community more effectively and efficiently. Uh, for the Technology Division, um, Technology Division, we have the conversion of a non-full-time IT technician to a full-time, uh, position to help us more effectively support the staff across all departments again, and the addition of a system administrator that will focus almost exclusively on public safety technology needs. There's also the conversion of the deputy to assistant city manager to better support the council, community, and the city manager, and there are no Measure M augmentations requested, and the total operating budget of the City Manager's Office is six-point-eight million.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan?
Question, uh, Ken, does this fall in the non-departmental slice of the pie that we saw earlier, or is, what category would we consider this in terms of the, the second slide we saw?
So, the non-departmental is its own section.
Is this the only one that's a non-departmental, or are there more in that category?
Non-departmental is actually going to be one of the slides that we're presenting, so it's its own section.
Got it, thank you.
I think what you're asking for is city manager is lumped-in administration from the previous slide on that.
Yes, yes, thank you, got it.
All right, so I'm going to be subbing for our Community Development Director this evening, and so for Community Development, the, the department's made up of four main divisions, that's planning, building, administration, and the Planning Commission. They provide a variety of department-related services, including planning and building permits and inspections, and track data related to construction and permitting activities, prepare long-range plans and other land use initiatives intended to make the community more attractive and welcoming. And then, uh, during the current fiscal year, the department was restructured to consolidate the two planning divisions, advanced planning and current planning, under one manager and an assistant director role replaced one of the previous management positions. Under this reorganization, the senior planner for current planning and the senior, um, planner for advanced planning supervise their respective work groups and reports to the planning manager. Um, there are no significant changes anticipated for the current year, but there are two positions that are being requested as part of the budget to be added to the department, and so the first is the management analyst position, who will assist the department with implementing the approved budget and support higher-skill administrative work within the Community Development Department as a whole. And this is anticipated to help the department streamline operations and modernize business practices. The permit technician position replaces the contractor, who was in that role for a number of years, and the new permit technician will be a part of the Building Division's front counter team, which provide customer service in person and online, and supports the plan check and inspection process. Community Development doesn't receive any Measure M funding, and the total operating budget for the upcoming year that's being proposed is five-point-eight million.
Next, we'll have our Economic Development Department, and on behalf of our director, we will have the City Manager present on his behalf.
Thank you. So, uh, I get the pleasure of filling in for Economic Development Division, um, as the, that department in its entirety is down at the Bio International Conference, um, doing some great things on the biotech, um, and, um, strategy that, uh, council has graciously approved. So, we have a variety of different divisions, um, uh, within that department, but their main focus is, uh, to implement the city's economic development strategy, as well as business retention, expansion, and attraction programs. Uh, there are no significant changes in the department at this time, and there are no recommended augmentations. However, we do wish to thank the council for your support with the Measure M funding. Uh, we are currently using Measure M for the implementation of Phase Three of our biotechnology strategy, um, so we can tell our story, why Vacaville's the best place to, um, locate your business for biotech-related and advanced manufacturing businesses. Another item that we're, um, looking to fund through Measure M is, um, the facilitation of the Vacaville Manufacturing Group by the Solano SBDC, and the purchase of data resources and tools that will support data-driven, uh, decision-making to target and measure the effective economic development efforts, uh, within the City of Vacaville. What that really means is, is that when a prospective business comes to Vacaville, um, we're able to put their, um, data into this, uh, um, software, and it shows us what the potential economic impact is in, in our community. And, uh, so it's a great resource for us, and so our total operating budget is one million dollars, and again, we're very grateful for, uh, your support in that because we continue to, um, attract more and more companies here at Vacaville. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to Finance.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Next slide. And so for the Finance Department, we currently employ twenty-eight people. It would be thirty if you include the two recommended positions that we're asking for, and they're spread over the five divisions that are listed, so Administration, Accounting, Budgeting, which is the team that you see up here, um, Revenue Collections, Dispersment, and also Utility Billing, as well as done out of the Finance Department. Uh, there are no significant changes, uh, for the upcoming year, but, uh, one thing I do want to mention is that, uh, we are going to continue to do work on strategic goal number four, ensuring the fiscal sustainability of the city, and, um, we will be coming to council, uh, in all likelihood in the first quarter with a pension policy, and then also relaunching our budget transparency website so that, um, people can come and kind of view the, the budget in real time, um, each month. The two positions that we're recommending for augmentation, or requesting for the upcoming year are the finance supervisor position and junior accountant position, and these two positions would add the, the needed bandwidth that we need in our accounting section. One of the things that's going on right now in the finance operation is a little, we're a little more reactive than I would like this to be. Uh, we really need to be more proactive, and this is going to give us kind of the room to do a lot more of the analysis, reconciliation, and support our departments more. Uh, we do not receive any Measure M funding in the Finance Department, and our total operating budget is five million dollars.
Councilmember Wiley?
I just want to clarify, so when we have these augmentations in these two positions, um, those are new positions? Are there currently any empty, unfilled positions in Finance Department? Are you full and you just want to add these two?
So, we do currently have, I believe it's two to three vacancies. And these would be two new positions.
Okay, thanks.
Our next department is going to be the Fire Department, and this will be the Fire Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm going to talk to you about the Fire Department today, and, uh, the divisions, as far as the Fire Department's concerned, is operations, which takes up about ninety percent of the budget, and that's first, further broken down into the suppression and EMS or emergency transport, and, um, and suppression really is a misnomer. We're an all-risk emergency provider, um, so it's, we do a lot more than just, uh, fire suppression. And then Fire Prevention Administration and Training take up about ten percent, the rest of the ten percent of, of the budget. Uh, there are no significant changes, uh, for next fiscal year, um, and as far as recommended augmentations, as we have told you before, um, Jill Childers, our Fire Marshal, is getting quite busy, especially with code enforcement, um, so we're, um, recommending a senior code enforcement, uh, code compliance technician, uh, that can supervise the three code enforcement techs that we have right now. Uh, and then as far as, uh, Measure M funding, uh, we talked, uh, we're recommending the apprentice program, which we had a lengthy conversation, um, about last, uh, council meeting, and that apprentice program includes a, uh, fire captain to administer the, the program and develop, and further develop the program, as well as, uh, non-full-time, uh, firefighter, uh, apprentices, as well as paramedic apprentices, and then includes some, uh, one-time services and supplies costs, and, and it's going to be a pilot program, um, for, for this year. And our total operating budget, uh, for next fiscal year is, uh, thirty-five-point-one million dollars.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Stockton?
Uh, Chief, before you go back and sit down, or maybe this is a question for Ken, I'm not sure, is the thirty-five-point-one million dollars, does that include the money generated that we get back for ambulance services here in town?
So, this is just the expenditure side.
Just the expenditure side, okay. Does that money go back into their budget?
It does.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, on the budget document, we list the expenditures, where you'll see that thirty-five-point-one million, and then towards the middle of each of the department pages, you'll see a source of funding, and that'll show kind of how much is provided by the general fund or, um, revenues the, the department generates, or even like state funding.
So, it offsets that voluntary?
Correct.
And what is that number? Approximate.
Sure, we can pull it up real quick, just give us a minute.
Since Roy brought it up. And get ready for the next one.
Okay, so for the EMS revenue, the projection is twelve-point-four million, so just rounding it up.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Next, we will have the Assistant Director of Housing and Community Services.
Good eve, good evening, Mayor, council members. The work of the Housing and Community Service Department is accomplished through four divisions and services. The first is the Administrative Division, and that is responsible for the department-wide office management and administrative activities. The second division is the Housing Division and recu, includes all housing-related programs, including the Vacaville Housing Authority Section Eight program, as well as the Solano County Housing Authority Section Eight program administered on behalf of Solano County. Um, it also includes activities, uh, under the Housing Counseling Center, as well as affordable housing programs, such as the First-Time Home Buyer Down Payment Assistance Program, and work to monitor and preserve existing and suppo, um, support new construction of affordable housing. We also have the Community Services Division, which includes programs such as the Community Development Block Grant Programs and Projects, including the upcoming, um, CDBG CARES funding, uh, city homeless initiatives, and regional, uh, community action partnership Solano JPA work, uh, uh, is administered on behalf of the CAP Solano JPA Board. And we also, uh, administer special projects, such as the winding down of the former redevelopment agency, uh, the Mariposa Center Improvement Project, and the Brown Street Social Service Center Park Project on Brown Street. Um, some significant department changes include the creation of the Assistant Director, uh, position, effective as of June first of this year. We will also be installing some self-service kiosks and workstations. Uh, this will help, uh, some clients, uh, submit documents electronically to the, the department, as we're trying to go move to a more paperless, paperless file system. Uh, and they will also be able to access their file information electronically, and will increase efficiencies and provide more, uh, a higher level of customer service, uh, and clients will be able to, uh, meet with their representative or technicians virtually. We will also be working with developers on pre-development activities for the Allison Affordable Housing Project, as well as the Oak Grove Affordable Housing Project, and we will be overseeing the CDBG CARES, uh, funded programs that prevent, prepare for, and respond to, uh, COVID-nineteen through mental health, homeless facility, food security, unhomelessness prevention and diversion funding. Uh, the recommended augmentations this year include adding a housing administrator to supervise the approximately fifteen-million-dollar Section Eight programs, and an administrative technician, uh, that will streamline the detailed financial processes, tracking, and monitoring of the multiple grants and other funding sources that the department, uh, has, and act as a direct liaison with the Finance Department. Uh, the department does not see any Measure M funding and has a total operating budget of thirty-two million dollars on the city side and seven-and-a-half million dollars under the successor agency. Thank you.
Next, we will have the Director of Human Resources.
I wear heels, so I didn't have to adjust this down tonight. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. Uh, the HR Division includes, uh, HR's divisions include recruitment, labor and employee relations, workers' comp and safety, payroll and benefits, and citywide training. Uh, we have thirteen full-time and three part-time employees. We have no significant changes this year, however, uh, our augmentation requests are for two full-time HR analyst positions. One would be a conversion of an existing part-time analyst in the Recruitment Division to full-time. The other would be a new analyst position in the Payroll and Benefits Division. The conversion of the part-time to full-time will help keep, help HR keep up with the increased demands in recruitment. Our number of recruitments has been increasing steadily due to retirements, pension reform, and more recently, the great resignation. The qual, the quantity has increased, as well as the staff time spent on each recruitment. Gone are the days of posting a job opening with limited outreach effort and getting plenty of qualified applicants. While we are always working on being creative and innovative in our approach to recruitments, we are now running some recruitments multiple times or leaving them open continuously. Staff is also spending more time courting candidates, um, that are often receiving counteroffers from their current employer after we've already made them a job offer. made them a job offer. And while we are always supportive and encouraging of internal promotions, those also result in a domino effect of vacancies to be filled. Converting this position from part-time to full-time will help address the increased workload. The addition of an analyst in the Payroll and Benefits Division will fill a skills gap between the HR manager and the HR technicians. Having this position will assist with ever-increasing and more complex reporting requirements, the increase in Public Records Act requests, and the overall continued effort to improve on transparency as a public agency. This will also allow the manager to focus on higher-level projects, such as our strategic plan goals and initiatives, while having analytical assistance to do so. HR does not have measure M funding, and our total operating budget is $2.7 million. Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hey, Jessica, sorry. Wait till I get all the way through, sorry. So, so my, my question is on COV Life. What, what portion of an FTE, or if any, do you have assigned to COV Life activities? And the reason I ask is, the council, in various stages and discussions with the city managers, really been looking at expanding ways to engage with our staff, retain our staff, really focus on wellness. You know, we've got some interesting salary packages. Police right now talking about new benefits, you know, pushing out tuition reimbursement payments for things of the sort that will help attract and retain the brightest and best. We're in a very competitive market now. So is COV Life right now, is it someone's like add-on duties, or do we have an FTE? And the reason I ask is really just the intentionality of having a position like an Employee Relations Manager, or someone that really is solely focused on that sole topic, in my opinion, super important. What is the current status of the staffing efforts for COV Life activities?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I'm super excited about where COV Life has gone. It started in HR. We kind of developed the program in HR. And over the last six months or so, we've been able to kind of transition COV Life into a program that's run by our executive assistants. The executive assistants are the hub of all of our departments, and they can really get connected with the employees and encourage them to participate, get the message out for us. And they're actually just this great group of people that come up with brilliant ideas. So they have taken on COV Life, the executive assistants in all the departments, and that is part of their function now. The other nice thing about it is it's kind of chaired by the executive assistant for the city manager. So it can now kind of run in coordination with COV Community or COV Connect, so that we can have the inward-facing COV Life and the external-facing COV Connect run together and encourage that participation from employees to also participate in those COV Connect events. And then HR is always there to support COV Life in anything that would include any kind of employee wellness, that kind of thing. So we really have a great, strong team working on COV Life now.
Okay, so you feel like we have the resources today. And I think part of the, what I'm thinking is, is sort of twofold. Like, you have the staff events, and you have the team building networks, and you have river rafting, or picnics, or movies, or all those amazing things that are great. But what I'm also talking about really is competing sort of in the 21st century job market, where you've got to look really at those benefit plans and those packages and some serious, serious benefits, whether that's dependent care benefits to care for a child, or to care for an elder, you know, parent, talking about enhanced tuition reimbursement packages, or student loan packages, cafeteria benefit plans, really making, you know, we're having issues in most of our departments right now recruiting. And so sometimes it's those, those tangible kind of serious, solid benefits that are really going to be the deciding factor. Do we have the capacity for someone to really be intentional and kind of put some thought there from HR, in addition to all the amazing stuff we're doing now? But I'm talking about like next level, like how do we build that, that world-class employee package? Is that, do you have the staff today to do that? Do you need more staff? Is that within our wheelhouse or our capacity now? Or do we need to look further?
We're moving toward that with the requests we've made with this budget. It will help. A lot of that stuff has to be done through collective bargaining. So that puts another layer on it. We're always trying to be innovative in that approach, and that's why we do the total comp studies, to see what other agencies are doing out there that might be innovative and new. We're getting feedback from employees as they exit. So I think, I think we're there. I think we have, we're moving toward that to be better prepared.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have one more. Councilmember Ritchie.
Well, Ashley, your great job was not for you. I was late to the microphone earlier.
Well, then you're out. Councilmember Stockton.
I was just curious from Councilmember Sullivan's comments, when you say cafeteria plan, can you go into depth about what you mean?
Oh, the vending machine.
Because I know some of them are different.
Well, I mean, cafeteria, I mean, cafeteria plan is sort of a loose term, Councilmember Stockton, for, for an employee being able to choose their benefits. So in some places now, local governments, there, there's a $25,000 OAB fund for employees, and they can pick dependent care, or they could pick enhanced eye care, they can pick tuition reimbursement, very creative benefits that sometimes don't come up through the bargaining table, but are very common in the private sector. And so really competitive, smart, local governments are starting to get ahead of this because our applicant pools are smart and they're choosy. And honestly, something like a $5,000 student loan repayment could be the, could be the deal breaker between landing a firefighter or not, or, you know, a $2,500 a year reimbursement for childcare could, could land that next accountant versus them going the next city over. I think what we do a lot in government is we wait for the bargaining table, when we could be proactive as a government to push those benefits forward and work with our bargaining units, but we're providing more benefits. So it's one of those things that's a good thing. I think if cities and local governments aren't getting into that space, it's weird, like looking at you talking. If we're not getting into that space, we're going to get whatever's left over, right? And there's cities that are really smart and progressive in doing that now, but you have to have the resources and someone in HR to think intentionally about it, and, and do the homework, and do the research, and work with the bargaining units. Otherwise, we get the same old, same old. And that's great, that's fine, but that also employees-
But it would still need to be approved by bargaining unit, right?
It would absolutely have to be approved, but it gives employees some choice, because sometimes maybe you don't want dependent care, but you want tuition, you know. So I'm just saying, I want to get more into that space as an employer, not superseding any of the bargaining process, just being more competitive and flexible. And like Jessica mentioned, oftentimes we look to see what other cities are doing. I'd love it if Vacaville was first on this, or we were a leader or a pioneer in this area. We often wait to see what other groups are doing. I'm seeing other cities doing this now, and our, our current employees deserve it. And I think that it could be a really good resource to attract that top talent in the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, next, I will go over our non-departmental. This budget is for operating costs, which are general in nature and not typically associated with one department. The main services that make up non-departmental budget are general items, such as property tax administration charges, the city share of countywide animal services, the annual city memberships and agency contributions. In addition, the ongoing operating costs for our radio system, homeless services, and our Measure I library subsidy. Under significant changes, we do have an election coming up in November 22, so the budget does include $200,000 for that. In addition, as mentioned earlier, we have the lighting and landscape maintenance district feasibility analysis. So there's $190,000 for that item, which is also a recommended augmentation. And then, as Ken mentioned earlier, as discussed with measure M, we have the $2.2 million additional discretionary payment for CalPERS. Under measure M funding, that is also the additional discretionary payment for CalPERS, and that is the first time we will be doing that. The total operating budget for non-departmental is $6.2 million.
Thank you.
Next, I will turn it over to the Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. The Parks and Recreation Department offers a wide range of recreation programs, activities, and special events for residents of all ages and abilities, as well as operates the city's community centers, neighborhood centers, aquatic centers, sports centers, performing arts, theater, and parks. In addition, the department is also responsible for park planning, marketing, administration of parks and recreation-related projects, as well as staffing the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Arts Advisory Committee. So what's on the horizon for Parks and Recreation this upcoming year? We're looking to expand our teen programming to include a teen advisory group for youth interested in planning events for the teen community, and a leader and training program that will provide the opportunity for teens to learn job skills through a series of training sessions, interviews, and on-the-job experience. We'll also, also, for the first time ever, be hosting a dive meet, welcoming springboard diving teams from the region. Our special interest program area is offering a new Imagine That program, where students explore the science used to solve crimes, including DNA, fingerprints, and other activities that encourage critical thinking. Special Events is eager to welcome our community back to the Creek Walk Concert Series and a summer year-end concert with Headline Rose Royce. Related to park projects, the Dog Park portion of the community park in the Roberts Ranch subdivision is expected to be under construction later this summer, and the pickleball courts are expected to be constructed in 2023. And we anticipate construction on the Lagoon Valley Dog Park expansion to commence later this year. The department augmentations include a park planner who will assist the department in oversight of parks projects and project plan review. The planner will also facilitate park and recreation facility-related community meetings, review policies, and develop master plans for park projects. The recreation supervisor will be responsible for oversight and administration of Civic Rec, our registration and reservation software, and will supervise our park rangers. The administrative technician position will create a marketing plan for the department and enhance community engagement and responsiveness through focused marketing efforts. And lastly, a conversion of a non-full-time facilities maintenance coordinator to full-time to better position the department for effective oversight of the eight city facilities and nine satellite buildings managed by Parks and Recreation, as well as planned facilities on the horizon. Measure M funding, $398,000 in measure M funding is being proposed for capital improvement projects. These proposals place an emphasis on increasing safety and quality with projects, such as improvements at U-Lattice, Georgie Duke, and the Vacaville Performing Arts Theater, purchasing gymnastics, uneven bars for our gymnastics program and spring floor replacement, and ADA path of travel improvements at Peña Doby, as well as Arlington Park and bleacher replacement at Arlington Park. Additionally, all previously mentioned positions would be funded through, by measure N, and our total operating budget is $10 million. Any questions?
I do have one question, Councilmember Sullivan. Sullivan, excuse me.
Two, two quick questions for you, thank you, Mayor. First question, you said park rangers plural. And I was actually going to ask you this anyways. Do we, what's our current park ranger? Do we just hire another one?
We're in the process.
Oh, is it two FLEs now?
We have one non-full-time, and we're hiring an additional non-full-time.
Awesome. Okay. That's great. And the current park ranger is amazing. Wonderful job. Big job. My second question is on the measure M funding, and the city manager just conveniently stepped away. On the measure M funding, does this include the parks projects that we have in the works this year that would roll over in theory, or would that count in this current year's budget?
This is all new for next year.
This is all new for next year, right? So but the exist, is it $9 million in parks projects? I think this year would still, obviously, the fiscal year is going to end any second now, so that would still roll forward.
Right, the projects are underway.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you. No other questions.
Okay, next, we will have our police chief to go over the police department's budget.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. As you can see, we have a number of divisions and services for your Vacaville Police Department, which is a full-service department with nearly 180 full-time employees and an authorized sworn officer staffing level of 115. The members of this department continue to provide exceptional service and safety, as well as a low crime rate for our community members, as well as those who visit and work in this fine city. Significant changes, one of the significant changes this year between last year has been our, the implementation of our District Commander Program, in which a patrol supervisor, a sergeant, and a patrol commander, lieutenant, watch commander, are assigned each to a specific voting district within the city. This program has thus far been very effective in connecting members of specific neighborhoods or regions directly to those members of the police department who are empowered to take action and have the authority to make important decisions in order to address the concerns within each unique neighborhood. Another significant change has been the undertaking of a complete and comprehensive audit of the police department by the OIR group. The auditors have been given full and unfettered access to every staff member, every process, every document, and report, and have a command staff member, Captain Chris Pollan, as a direct point of contact to ensure this is the case throughout the remainder of the audit process. Recommended augmentations for this upcoming fiscal year, the department recommends the addition of two public safety dispatchers to our communication center, as we steadily work to approach the optimal staffing levels for a full-service city of over 100,000 residents. And the department is also requesting funding to replace older cameras, as well as purchase some additional new cameras, as part of the citywide camera project's final phase and maintenance cycle. The license plate reader camera system has both increased the arrest numbers for various serious crimes committed in our community, as well as become a deterrent to those looking to commit crimes in Vacaville, as word has spread about the effectiveness of our ALPR cameras in addressing criminal activities in real time. There was no additional measure M funding requested for this year's fiscal budget, and the police department's proposed total operating budget for fiscal year 2223 is $50.1 million.
Thank you. We do have a couple of questions, but yeah, that ALPR phenomenal. I remember us voting it in, and we were all wondering how it was going to work, and it's been just absolutely great. So it's great to see that we're going to update and, and bring more in. I don't know who went first. I'm going to go, Councilmember Stockton.
Oh, I just know that we have a few months before school starts back up, and I think any, any parent of any kids going to school has been affected by what happened in Texas. How is our staffing in our youth services portion of the police department? And is there any needs that you have in that area that can help make some of us parents feel safer about our kids being at school?
Well, as school just ended, we are, during summertime, we usually have our youth services section, school resource officers rotate back into patrol with a couple of exceptions, and that's related to the diversion program. But as we progress throughout the summer, we'll be able to better give you an idea of what we're looking at. We do have some retirements coming up in the sergeants' ranks, and that could potentially affect who the supervisor will be in that unit. But as we move through the summer, I can provide updates to, to the council as to how we're looking as we approach the school, school year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Very similar questions, actually. So I totally echo Councilmember Stockton's comments. I think there's a lot of parents very anxious right now, including myself and including others. I don't think we've ever formally had a discussion about the SRO program here at council since I've been on at least. So even just knowing who's staffing what, how many officers we have, who pays for what. I know there were quite a few discussions with the school board and the school administration staff on the cost and expanding or attracting a couple of years back that council wasn't involved in. I'd really like to have a deeper discussion. I think honestly, parents would like to hear the details, the ins and outs, the programs we're providing, all of the amazing MSW interns. I, I think the timing is, is great to really discuss that and actually give council kind of a baseline, so we could even talk about maybe expanding services or increasing there. I know that's not what we're really talking about tonight. But we did request a presentation on FRC and first programs. And I'd also like to talk about, you know, do we have enough, you know, beef there as well? If possible, it'd be great if we could have kind of a full presentation on FRC first and SROs, and really invite the public, because there's a lot of anxiety out there. I'm getting a lot of calls from parents. I had a heartbreaking call on Friday from a parent in Travis saying, you know, what are our police doing in our schools? I'm like, sorry, there's no SROs in Travis. And so the more this discussion, I think, can be public, I think the, the better. And so I, I don't know if that's a possibility, but I would love to have FRC first and, and our, our school resource officers discussion brought back to council. And I'm not saying to give us options, but we might say, hey, like, this isn't enough, you know, we got to figure this out, or we want to provide extra this or extra that. I think the timing's right, and, and, you know, strike while the iron's hot. So if that's a possibility, I'd love to hear, have a robust, detailed discussion about that, and tell parents to come down and hear it. So, because I think that would help. Is that a possibility with the, yeah, okay?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can, we can put that together sooner rather than later.
Awesome. Because we have four officers right now. Is that kind of roughly what?
Yeah, correct. One at each of the two large high schools, and one at each of the two large middle schools.
Okay, great. And then my second question is sort of unrelated but related, but is crew backup to staffing? Do we have the staff now to adequately run crew, or is it still kind of limping along, or where are we at?
Not yet, but the good news is, is that Thursday, we have five graduates graduating from the Police Academy in Sacramento. Of course, it'll take a few months for them to, to get up to speed, but those five are definitely going to help with our, our patrol staffing. It's getting better. Hopefully, we're, we're in a few short months, ready to go back full steam.
And my last question is related to that as well. So are you, is the hiring incentive producing fruit? Are you, is it making a difference? Can you tell yet? What's your, what's your inclination so far?
We've definitely gotten additional interest from lateral officers and academy graduates, and that's, that's been great. Lieutenant Katie Cardone has been working really hard to, to look through those, those candidates. You know, there's, like you said earlier, it's incredibly competitive out there. So we're looking at other departments around us, just seeing, you know, even, even like, like you said earlier, some small incentives really seem to attract folks. So we're really taking a good, comprehensive look at that. But the incentives that, that this board has, has authorized are definitely making an impression.
And I, I have one more question, sorry. The mental health crisis response. So is there any cost to the city, or is that all county? sponsored? And I have a follow-up depending on how you answer that question.
That is all county sponsored, medic, the medic ambulance contract is run through the county, so they do the pickups regardless of whether the mental health team comes out and does their assessment or if it's done completely by us.
The clinical piece though, who's running the clinical piece? Is that county staff, is that contractors, that's not medic, right?
No, it's not medic, it's Uplift, which is a contractor through Strong County.
And again, that's no cost to the city, right?
Correct.
Okay, so my, my question, and this is sort of day job hat and all and a night job hat and all, and is that we're having massive issues hiring here in the city, our small nonprofit contractors are, it's exponentially worse, right? They don't have benefit plans or pensions or all that stuff to offer. If if we're, and I know the program was was several months delayed, if not a year or so delayed because of staffing issues, right? And that's going to happen in the nonprofit sector. If there were a way to augment a budget and let's say toss an extra fifty K at it to help them actually increase the salaries for their contracted staff to make sure we have those staff in Vacaville, I think that would be something I'd be very open to. So I think we're finding now that you can, you can set a budget and you can throw money out there, but it's not bringing people to where you need them. And so we're in this weird place in government where we actually have budgets, but we can't hire people because there's not enough. So I think if you're not finding we're getting the support we need, especially on that mental health side, you know, please come back and tell us and, you know, I think council, I would hope would entertain some sort of augmentation of that contract and make sure those clinicians are serving folks in Vacaville, especially as the world sort of falls apart around us with all these crazy things, so just keep that in mind, please.
Absolutely, we can include that with with Paula's presentation.
Great, that'd be awesome. Thank you again for all the information, I appreciate it.
I have one more comment. Councilmember Wiley.
I just want to echo the conversation on the school and I want to clarify what Councilmember Sullivan just said. Travis does have SRO, but because they're in Fairfield, the SRA comes from Fairfield. So they're, they're at Vandon and Golden West, they have access to SRO. And then the two elementary schools that are within Foxborough and Cambridge within District Six, they have, will call the Vacaville PD if they have an issue, so they are covered by police.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next we'll have the Assistant Public Works Director, Brian McLean.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. The Public Works Department is made up of a hundred and twenty-four full-time staff. In general, we design, build and maintain the city's public infrastructure. Our proposed fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three budget and augmentations will allow the department to continue its mission-critical services and programs in our four main functional areas, that being within engineering services, traffic engineering, maintenance and administration. In terms of significant changes, in the fall of twenty-twenty-one, the department instituted a comprehensive organizational analysis, the goal of which was to identify the department's strengths, challenges and areas of improvement. Within those areas of improvement, we wanted to lay the foundation for a more efficient and effective public works department. The information garnered from that study allowed us to consult with the city manager's office as well as human resources to request staff positions in this year's budget to better balance the workload in in public works to the staffing resources that we have. To that end, the public works proposed budget includes general fund and measure M funded positions and those positions are, for the maintenance division, a measure M funded public work superintendent to help manage the continuing growth of the city's infrastructure, two maintenance workers in the streets section to manage the maintenance and repair of the city's six hundred and something miles of roadway, a public work supervisor fire mechanic to maintain compliance with the National Fire Protection Association guidelines in the maintenance of our fire equipment, an administrative technician in transit to help continue the growth of the city's public transit system, and an office assistant conversion from part-time to full-time in our central garage, which manages the back office administration of the repairs of six hundred and forty-four pieces of equipment and tools throughout the city. For the engineering service division, we are requesting an asset management GIS technician. The department has no technician at this point and in this day and age, GIS is the lifeblood of public works departments. That said, we are looking for an individual to provide updates, analysis, mapping, functions, et cetera, in that GIS area. As for, as far as general fund augmentation requests, we are asking for fifty-five thousand dollars in general fund to hire a consultant to ensure compliance with the state water resources board in their regulation to mitigate trash flowing into the city's storm drain system. And as far as measure M augmentations, this year's budget includes ninety thousand dollars for the play for all maintenance. We expect the transition of the park to occur within the next three, three months. Forty-five thousand dollars for the Walter Graham Aquatic Center, that's essentially chemical costs, the cost of chemicals continues to go up and it's impacting the budget. And then fifty thousand dollars for traffic safety, street striping and graphics, and this will allow the maintenance division to put more paint on the road and put more markings on our roadways. And the proposed operating budget for this next fiscal year for the public works department is thirty point seven million dollars.
Thank you. I do have one comment, Councilmember Sullivan.
Sorry, two quick questions. First question, the public work superintendent position, is that a frontline manager or is that senior management?
It would be senior management in the corporation yard. Right now, we're, the the senior management level is stretched, we're playing multiple, multiple hats. The the study analyzed that we we initiated last year identified this particular area as a much needed resource to help us spread the load across the corp yard so that we can more efficiently affect program work and repairs.
Great, and then my, my second question is, what's, how's the status on your, the building, how's it going? And are there any unpleasant surprises that we're seeing in the budget today? Are there any overruns or or second additions? I know we, we had our four million dollar, two mile stretch of road last time, but how's it going and is there anything that's impacting the budget for next year?
It's, it's going well. We do weekly construction meetings, the building is going up, as you can see, they're making a very aggressive push to be able to get the, the administration building done by August, September is what we're, we're looking at. The second piece of that construction contract was the remodel of building B, the existing Butler Building that we have. We're expecting that the contractor is going to be wrapping that up by the end of the month.
Okay.
So we would more likely be moving staff back in come July. As far as fiscal impacts on the construction contract, it's, it's, it's a construction project, there have been some woes here and there, but we are diligently working with our REM, the contractor, and making sure that both parties are on the same page and and moving forward. So looking forward to to finally getting out of a, a trailer and and putting some, putting, having a facility with an actual concrete foundation.
Awesome, thank you, keep up the good work.
Seems like they're taking forever out there. Oh, we have, we have one more comment. I'm not going to let you go.
I'm all yours, Mayor, Councilmember Ritchie.
I'll be fast. So I think last week I got a call from one of our Vacaville City Fire, Firefighters in regard, my district District Two, we had to brown out. So we've had a conversation just kind of back and forth, a few things, and all of a sudden, my ear perked up about, I guess, one thing you keyed on is like, how, the amount, the sheer amount of vehicles we have in the city of Vacaville, how they roll through replacements to keep everything optimal going forward. Do you need more people to work on the vehicles, to get them back to capacity, to get them going faster? And also, is there a way to do like a budget augmentation to make sure like, so there's the creeks, the creek downtown, we're going to invest all some money in the downtown Pacific Plan to make sure that it's beautiful and from kind of bridge to bridge, is there a way to kind of augment the budget for that, that creek, that section? And if you go to kind of District Two, corner Leisure Town and Elmira, you can start the trail, it goes all the way through, I think, till, through past Beeler Park, to Knoll's District. It's amazing ride, I do all the time, I have kids, and it's really beautiful and like, what would it cost to add that to the budget to really beautify the parts of the creeks that people actually had access to, it's supposed to have access to in Vacaville and make sure that they're really inviting? And also with public works, just get your vehicles back on the road faster and what do you, what, what else do you need to hire to make sure you guys aren't overworked? Every, every day, I go to the gym in the morning, I clockwork, they are just working their butt off and I see them all the time and I feel like those guys are just like ants all around town, just working so hard, so like, what else would you need to kind of oversee your budget going forward?
Well, we, we like to stay busy, all good questions, thank you. In terms of the garage and the, the equipment load and the maintenance load on the garage, the proposal before we tonight for public works does provide some push toward the, the better direction. We are working to solve those issues and the department is working with human resources on several matters related to classification changes, which will allow us to be able to broaden the garage and create a better, better classification tracks, which will allow us to be able to ultimately, I think, fill those tracks with individuals to maintain that, that growing fleet. That said, we're having the same kind of challenges that every other department, whether public or private sector, in terms of the hiring, but we are making good progress. I feel confident that once we get this done, we are, are going to be on a, a more stable road to make those, meet those obligations in the future in terms of that maintenance. As far as the, the downtown and the, the creek walk area, the, our CIP Engineering Division with Tim Burke leading the, leading the way, we've got several projects that are already on the books, we plan on making some pretty massive improvements. There's been some regulatory hurdles that Tim and his team has been working through over the last few years, but we're, we're almost at that point. I, I believe they're going to be starting some of that work in terms of the reconstruction of the, the creek walk, walkway paths and everything else very soon. And then finally, your question as to, you know, enhancing the, the creek walk from end to end, essentially, obviously that would be a, we would work with, you know, the city manager's office to develop a, a project considering, you know, those particular comments. All those things are doable, it's, it's just a matter of laying them out and identifying those milestones so that we can start working on addressing the, you know, the, the funding issues, which are, are the big piece of it. There's lots of grants and and other resources out there and it's just a matter of, from our perspective, being able to programmatically address those things, but it's a great, great piece. We do have that creek resource and it, it could be enhanced, you know, to be a, a draw like it is in many other cities. So we look forward to working with city council to, to make that happen someday.
Yeah, to make sure like, also like, this is a downtown creek, but going, starting from that corner and then the development, that part town is going to keep growing. So you're going to have a tremendous amount of people that are going to be new to Vacaville that can easily start this really fun journey from like all the park at Alamo, Play For All Park area, like right at that intersection, start that journey at that small park and go all the way through Vacaville, like I'll, I'll take my kids and it's amazing, it's really fun, but you can go all the way to the back of Vacaville Christian and it's a really fun trip and there is some elements and there's a lot of overgrowth, people are hanging out and you kind of spooked for a while, but it, it is very beautiful, but this, I know the downtown creek is amazing, but that, with the amount of growth we have in that area, it's going to have to be a corridor for a lot of young families, people to really enjoy that creek, the whole city. I'm going to make sure we don't just get tunnel vision on downtown, which I love it, but the whole, the city as a whole should go to benefit from that kind of stuff.
Well, we've got twenty-six miles of creeks, we have, we have lots of, lots of path to walk.
Thank you, sir.
Our final department will be utilities and we will have the utilities director discuss the water and sewer fund.
Good evening. Overall, I'll talk positions and it will apply to both water and sewer. Utilities has seventy-six full-time positions, I believe we have four interns and then water and sewer funds, a little over fifteen public works positions and can you correct me if I'm wrong, four in utility billing? Four, uh, four positions in utility billing. So on the water side, we have water operations, maintenance, water quality, administration, finance and meter reading, and then public work field utilities. Most significant changes, our budget's pretty similar to last year, no recommended augmentations, no measure M funding. I guess the, the one thing is we are getting started with a water rate study. It's going to take seven to eight months to complete. Total operating budget on the water side is twenty-six and a half million.
My favorite presentation so far? Thank you very much, I don't see.
Oh, you're, see, I get, I get, I get two slides, Mr. Mayor.
I take that back, I take that back.
Very similar as far as the divisions, it's just you had wastewater operations on, on this side. No so-called changes, no measure M funding. On the revenue side, it does assume four hundred thousand of uncollected revenue to COVID, but I think we'll, we'll be working on offsetting that based on council's direction to allocate ARPA funds toward that. Similar to the water fund, we are undergoing a sewer rate study as, as well and total operating budget on the sewer side is thirty-eight point four million.
Is that it? Oh, we have one comment, Councilmember Sullivan.
Thanks very much. As we move more and more into the drought, do we have any ability to monetize purple pipe? Is there any, is that even a legal possibility?
When you say monetize recycled water?
Yeah, like, let's say, you know, we've talked a lot about, Green Tree has these amazing green sapes that are dead and Huge Fire has it right now, like, could we, if the HOA decided to figure out a way to tap into that particular system, sell them recycled water purely for, obviously not potable for, but is that, is that something we can do or are we exploring that? Is it even legal to do that? And, and what are your thoughts on that in general?
It is, it is possible and we are moving through the process in order to get, there's kind of two aspects to it. One is permitted approval from the state and then the second one is to design and build the required capital facilities needed to
Get it everywhere.
Get that water there. So the water is produced at, at the, at the wastewater plant and right now goes into the creek, so that part is done. There is purple pipe and new developments, but what's missing is the
Connection.
Connection between the plant and that, and so we are, we are beginning that phase. You know, a while back, the council approved the feasibility master plan as well as the EIR for the recycled water program.
So when we do connect it, are, are there different rate structures for recycled versus regular water?
There, there will be and we, we haven't, we haven't explored that specifically yet as far as what, what, what it will be.
Because the conundrum though is you have Easterly here and then the rest of town, I mean, how do you, yeah?
So, so it's, you know, the, the water is available.
Right.
It's just the facilities to get it to the, the places are not yet.
Got it, okay, thank you very much.
And the council's been screaming for purple pipe for as long as I've been up here. Unfortunately, the state of California didn't want to give us those permits to let it happen, so we love the state of California. Okay, that's it.
All right, so that concludes the operating budget portion. We still have the capital improvement program budget presentation coming up, but before we get into that second half, Mr. Mayor, we're asking if you could open it up for questions from the public?
Sure, I'll open it up public. I see nothing, close.
All right, so we'll just switch out now.
I do have Councilmember Sullivan has a comment.
Sorry, quick comment, question, it's probably for the city manager. So a few of us have talked about green energy, zero net energy, getting the city's, you know, green footprint down as low as possible, we've talked about charging stations, I know we have a megawatt or so out at Easterly. Where in the budget, if, if anywhere, did we build any expanded kind of green projects, solar projects, energy efficiency projects? I know we have a plan coming up, I keep forgetting the name of it, but is that built in structurally with any money behind it next year at all?
Not as part of this budget at this time. That is something that we believe will be, you know, as we move through completing some of the other priorities of, from the strategic plan that as we come back to council, we've heard you previously mention an interest in this, but right now, all the staffing resources necessary to work on that focus plan are working on other council priorities at this time. But again, once we complete those, we can come back and I think that's the best way to approach it is, you know, comprehensively to look at what are the different opportunities to achieve the, the desired net zero results, but also, you know, financial opportunities to, to help ourselves and spending opportunities for completing those type of improvement projects.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Wiley.
I just had a follow-up on the utilities question like Sullivan just asked, because when we looked at that pie chart first, did they all go, finance people, when we looked at that pie chart first, you know, twenty-five percent of it went for utilities and so I just wondered about if twenty-five percent was going to utilities and we put that solar, we approved that solar field at Easterly, you know, last year, if we had other solar projects, would that affect twenty-five percent of our budget being spent on utilities? Or is that different utilities when?
It's utilities department, I think.
Okay, was that the whole thing on the whole utilities department? Was twenty-five percent?
It's sewer.
Okay, all right.
So that's just for sewer and water, it's not utilities as a P G and E?
It was just the utilities department, like. It was just the utilities department, like police department and those other departments. Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and city council members. My name is Tim Burke. I am the Assistant Director of Public Works and I'm here to present the 2223 Capital Improvement Program Budget. The following slide is a breakdown of the $40 million CIP budget. The largest funding source for the capital improvement program is the development impact fees at 42%, followed by the grant funding at 14%, general fund five, measure M nine percent, sewer and water at 10 and 12% respectively, and then gas tax at 9%. The following slide shows a, a trend over the last five years of, of our DIF revenue, so of what is available to budget. Uh, we'd kind of like to show this just to kind of show how development is proceeding. As you can see that the, the 2223 budget year, we're slightly down from last year, but still well up from years past, still, still trending in the upward slope. And then this is our general fund funding. So this year, we've, we've, we've budgeted slightly more general fund, not, not too much. Uh, it's been remaining consistent over the last five years with the exception of 2020, 21, where the city held back budgeting of general fund monies for, during the pandemic. The following chart here shows the CIP budget in the types of projects, so based on funding. The sewer utilities being the largest at 35%, followed by water utilities at 27%, streets at 26%, public buildings and parks and recreation at six and five respectively, and then lastly the storm drainage system at 1%. So I wanted to highlight some of the projects that are in the, in the packet. So there's a total of, I believe, 58 projects. 22 of them are new projects and I'm going to go over just a, just a few of them real quick. The City Hall tenant improvements, Phase Two, this is $400,000 from the general fund. Provides for funding for office reorganization and safety improvements for the city attorney's office, public works, and the finance area. Fire Station 74 renovations, $530,000 in, in general fund money. This budget provides funding to address gender privacy issues in the dorms and restroom and replace old and deteriorating fixtures. Vacaville Performing Arts Theater, we have $75,000 in measure M funding, provides funding for various performing, various items at the Performing Arts Theater, including hydraulic fire curtain, replacement of the stage floor, an orchestra shell, and various other amenities. The downtown specific plan, water upsizing, this is $5.2 million worth of water distribution development and, and development impact fees and ARPA funding. So it provides for upsizing of the downtown water lines in, in the downtown area to meet fire flow. And then finally, our intelligent transportation ITS master plan, this is $200,000 in traffic impact fees to help identify improvements and infrastructure needs to upgrade the city's over 70 signalized intersections. And finally, the bulk of our CIP budget is going towards, is being allocated towards 36 existing projects, including Jepson Parkway Phase Two, where we have 2 million in traffic impact fees. This is Jepson Parkway, again widening Leisure Town Road from Mel Meyer Road to Ullatus Creek, where the utility relocation portion of this project was approved by city council just last month. And then Roberts Ranch Community Park, this is a community park that's being developed as a turnkey project by the developer. We have been setting aside these parks and rec fees and we will be repaying the developer at the time we, that, that the park is completed and accepted by the city. Downtown specific plan improvements, $500,000 in measure M funding. This is to help fund various improvements identified in the downtown specific plan. Nelson Park Master Plan, $677,000 of parks and rec development impact fees to go towards that park master plan. And then finally, the Stinson Westmont Vista Avenue Sewer is a $3.8 million sewer connection fees and ARPA funding that's going to provide funding to replace undersized sanitary sewer along Stinson Avenue and Westmont Vista. So that concludes the capital improvement program budget. Uh, I'm going to turn it back over to Eric.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, members of the city council. So there you have it. We, we spent quite a bit of time on this because it's important. It's well over a $250 million budget and we're doing a lot with it. And so we spent some extra time on it, but now we've presented and marked you through our, your operational budget, your CIP budget, as well as your measure M budget. And much like the past two budgets that we presented to the city council, this budget before you tonight for the fiscal year 2223 is also a proactive and strategic budget that is designed to address the ongoing challenges to our economic recovery efforts while keeping our commitment to reinvestment into all the vital services that the city provides to this amazing community. It hasn't been easy though. As you know, for the past few budgets, we've had to wrestle with the impacts of the pandemic and its effect on our economy. And now we have new challenges that we're facing, including the rising cost of services during a, a record period of inflation, workforce competition, supply chain delays, and as Jessica mentioned to you in the HR field, all the challenges that the great resignation is providing or presenting to us. But despite all of these challenges, the city is experiencing sustained increases to our major revenue sources through positive improvements to the local economy. And then as a result of the city's diverse economic base and longstanding commitment to fiscal sustainability, those have supported the city throughout the pandemic and provide the basis for this budget that we're presenting to you tonight. This budget addresses near-term fiscal issues, economic recovery efforts, and invests in all the other priorities from the city's strategic plan. If you can pass the next slide, Tim. And here's our strategic plan. And this was kind of at the heart of this, at the earlier State of the City address that we mentioned earlier this year. And by investing in all of these different priorities, we are providing a, a very balanced budget, I believe, and something that will help the, the organization stabilize and address all the important topics that we've shared with you tonight and provide all those important services. And from my perspective, you know, if, if we're not investing in those strategic plan priorities through our budget, then we're not really, they're not priorities. And so this is truly something that we've looked at very long and hard and I appreciate the council's support. So with that, I would like to thank the council for your vision, for our, our future, for the community that we highlighted in our State of the City earlier this year and the renaissance that I believe that we're about to embark on. I also want to support your, or acknowledge and thank you for your support for this budget. We put a lot of big ask in front of you and I appreciate your willingness to tackle those hard budget questions related to our structural and foundational issues. And so we're very grateful for that. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank all the members of the executive team and the representatives from the, their hard and resilient staff that have been working on this budget as well in a collaborative manner to present this budget to you. And of course, I'd like to personally thank the budget team of Ken Matsumiya, Leslie Hoover, John Colette, and Krista Groner for their tireless efforts on putting this budget together for you. Next slide, please. So with that, we have one more step in the budget process. We will be presenting that at your next meeting on June 28th. We will include any and all revisions that we received tonight, as well as an updated five-year forecast and then the necessary highlighting of our pay schedule and we will bring that back to council for your final approval. So with that, your entire budget team is here to answer any questions and receive any more comments you have on this.
You were, you were messing with me with that 12 out of 11. Open up public comment for CIP. Saying none, and I have no comments. We'll move on to the next item. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As a reminder to the audience, we are skipping over items C and D, so the next item is 9E, Resolution of the City Council Adopting the Updated Solano County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. I have Chief Concepcion here to make a presentation.
You're good. Yeah, you're good to go.
Good evening again.
Councilmember.
Well, I just wanted to say, if, if we can be maybe more vocal about the, the agenda items that were canceled instead of just maybe saying that they, I know that these folks waited a long time and please feel free to reach out to staff if you have a question or email us as well.
Good. Yeah, you're good. Good. Go ahead, chief.
All right. Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. As the city manager mentioned, we're here before you to, for your consideration is the adoption of the, I want to make sure I get this right, the updated Solano County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan for the city of Vacaville and the city's jurisdictional annex to the MJHMP. Basically, what we did was we participated in a countywide effort for hazard mitigation planning and I brought reinforcements with me tonight and the consultant, Brian Greer from Dynamic Planning, to explain the process and what you're considering tonight.
Yes, thank you, Chris. Good, uh, good evening. Next slide, please. So I'll, I'll start with why I have a hazard mitigation plan. As you can see, some of these bullet points up on the screen are pretty important, saving lives, reducing property and infrastructure damage, reducing the recovery costs. But underlying all of that is your access to FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Assistance, or HMA, grant program. Uh, the goal, the joint goal of the HMA is to reduce the, the loss of life and property due to natural hazards. And the city must have an approved hazard mitigation plan to qualify for that grant program. And FEMA requires an approved HMP or an approved update every five years to maintain that grant eligibility. And so Vacaville's previous HMP was standalone, only the city of Vacaville, that was approved in 2015. And this time Vacaville is part of a multi-jurisdictional HMP. Vacaville has taken advantage of this joint regional effort, including the county OES at the helm, seven municipalities, and three special districts. This plan has two different volumes. The first volume covers the entire county and analysis for the unincorporated areas of the county. Volume two has an annex for each of the municipalities and the three special districts shown up on the map there. And the Vacaville annex in its current state has been reviewed and vetted by Solano OES and it has approval pending adoption from FEMA. So this, this plan update was started in 2020 and went through the pandemic years. So we had to use some clever meeting techniques, a lot of zooming and data management to identify these threats from and vulnerabilities to the natural hazards in the county and in the city. The mapping platform shown on this slide in this animation is what we use to quantify risk to people, homes, and city infrastructure interactively. So we use this a lot in our meetings to really dive down and figure out what the problems are in, in the city, to flooding, earthquake, landslide, et cetera. Details from, from that mapping interface in our meetings or interfacing with the city's staff went into our mitigation action database and what you see on screen here is MAST or the mitigation action support tool. And this is basically a, a database that the city has access to with mitigation actions that we've developed over the course of, of this planning effort. And this is designed to capture both the FEMA-related stuff for the HMP and common grant application details for a variety of mitigation projects from flooding to fire to drought, climate change stuff, so that you can streamline the, the grant application process. And this can be revisited and leveraged by the city over the next five years and beyond. This will be open and accessible to the city. When those grant opportunities come down through CALOES, you can, you can visit this and you got all your details ready to go and you can submit those grant applications quickly and efficiently. And this, this is all hosted at mitigatehazards.com. You can kind of see it down in the corner, along with the plan, that mapping interface, and all of the stakeholder tools that we've used throughout this process. And up here on the left are two example mitigation actions, and that's just the title. There's a lot more details behind this in, in the application, as you see. And these are, these have been prepared, like I mentioned, for specific vulnerabilities in the city discovered through this HMP process. And what, the way that the city has access to grant funding is through CALOES. So they're the applicant to FEMA and the city is a sub-applicant to the state. So this will always go through CALOES. They have a notification system on their website when, when funds are ready and then we pluck the projects we want and put them into an application and we're ready to go. So that's a, a real quick whirlwind tour of our, our planning process and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm going to open it up with public. I want to close public, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Roberts.
Yeah, thank you. Sure. Chief probably expected questions from me because I work with CALOES.
Sure, sure.
Was there, I went through it, it's very well laid out. I think it's really understandable for even people that don't work in the emergency management field.
Sure.
Was there any, I mean, I went through it, I saw the statuses of the different sections. Was there anything that really stood out that Vacaville needed that is more of an immediate piece that we should focus on?
We have a really good, I think there's 30 mitigation actions that are canned up across all of the threats and of course, like pandemic and fire are the, the latest things that are on everyone's mind, but we have flood. We actually did your 2015 plan as well, Dynamic Planning, and I know flood was more of a, a focus there. So that's still in, in the plan and we've kind of updated the progress on those things. So the whole spectrum of what you're up against here is, is still captured and
Yeah, so that table at the end with the ongoing pending, was there any like a, are there, I didn't see if it's prioritized by any specific.
There, we have to present the status of actions that were in the previous plan and then present new ideas as well. So that's the difference there. And there's no, there's no priority to any of the actions, they're just all eligible for, for that grant process.
Okay, yeah. One piece, I know we've talked about it before, I brought up at the previous budgeting one was the, more on the administrative side, the three positions, there's a public outreach, the emergency manager, and then also the grant manager, which we do not have for the city. I know since we're now over 100,000 population, those are probably needed. As I, I know we do outsource the, the grant writing, but I think it's still going to benefit One piece I did not see in here, I know the past because I worked for a lot of nonprofits, is there's no reference to working with the BOADS, whether at the state, county, or national level of BOADS for the... Because there's a lot of nonprofits out there that want to do work. I did see Fire Safe Council on there, which is really important, especially Pleasant Valley. But I didn't see anything mentioning the BOADS or COADS.
Yeah, that's something that can happen next time, and it's just a matter of getting the stakeholders together at the beginning of the plan and getting input from them. And sometimes that's difficult to do throughout the process, but it's something that can happen next time.
Yeah, I know since the last one, that I believe it was the 2015 one, the Solano BOAD wasn't really a thing, but now it's fully ramped up. I know Solano OES and Vince Valenzuela from Red Cross is kind of chairing it right now. It's actually very active. I just had a call with them a couple days ago.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Especially with the shortage of personnel for fire and PD. There's even public works because there's a lot of nonprofits that'll go out there and clear out culverts and creeks and help out mitigation if we don't want to spend a lot of firefighter time on it. Yeah, more for the specific mitigation efforts. I saw there's earthquake education on there. I know I've worked with them at OES from time to time. Is there is dedicated teams that do that for free for cities' earthquake education? There's also the education for fire and stuff for, if needed, we just have to request it. I did see cooling centers on there, which I brought up earlier as a mean in public comment. I know there's generators on here. Yeah, I know that's more like historically like diesel, but do you also include like battery generators on there?
Yeah.
Because I know for earthquakes, diesel might not be readily available depending on liquefaction and if there's actually diesel storage available or for get damaged.
Yeah, that's getting more popular for sure. There's a big project that Kern County got through this program with battery backups and generators.
Okay. And then, yeah, my other last piece was, kind of mentioned already, the other flood-fire mitigation. It's more public works because they're the ones who are kind of handling that, is possibly reaching out to the BOADS regarding that. Point that I thought is really well laid out, well done, and yeah, looks good from... I've looked at a lot of these before, so it's very understandable.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, and anybody else have any questions? All right, yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the hazard mitigation plan.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Roulet?
Yes.
Okay, item F.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is a discussion regarding the use of ARPA funding to develop and implement two community engagement and neighborhood capacity building strategies in council district number three. Our program manager, Rika Gidri, is here to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. So tonight, I'll be going over District Three's neighborhood capacity building strategies. So a quick overview of this presentation will cover the purpose, the background, the projects, what neighborhood capacity building is all about, the Health Education Council, who they are, and their phased approach strategy, the benefits of a neighborhood plan, and the potential use of ARPA funding. So the purpose of this strategy is really to increase public engagement within District Three. So to do so, we have to have... We're trying to increase trust between the city and the community, and we also have to empower the residents so we can create changes, and therefore, we can improve the health and wellness with the residents within their neighborhoods. So the background of this effort is that Councilmember Silva and staff began working on methods to build neighborhood capacity in his district. We also started engaging with the community in a variety of topics and projects within his district. So how will we address these needs? We found that there are two primary projects that we want to explore. Project number one is to develop a work plan to increase the public engagement with utilizing the neighborhood capacity method, and that's with Health Education Council. They are a nonprofit organization, and they're actually spearheading this effort in this district. Project number two is preparing a neighborhood plan. This will enable new opportunities to reinvest and redevelop in the district. And basically, the neighborhood plan would then give residents the opportunity to take an active leadership role in the planning process. So what is neighborhood capacity building? Well, the capacities are the abilities, resources, and strengths in that community to develop, implement, and sustain their own solutions to problems. They'll also help communities shape and exercise control over their environments, whether socially, economically, and culturally. So the focus of this effort is really based on the following objectives, and as you can see, bullet pointed here, it's building the skills and confidence of the individuals and groups, enhancing community decision-making, creating common vision, implementing practical strategies, and promoting inclusion and social justice. So the Health Education Council, as mentioned earlier, is a nonprofit organization, and staff's been working with them to start the conversation with the community. Now, their background is that they've been in the business for over 30 years promoting health in low-income neighborhoods across Northern California. They specialize working with a lot of stakeholders, such as residents, law enforcement, faith, healthcare. Additionally, they also build consensus to positively impact the causes of health, economic, and education disparities. So what's a neighborhood plan, and how's it different from the work plan? Well, a neighborhood plan really gives the community the opportunity to plan for their local area, decide on the aesthetics of their neighborhood, define the neighborhood and how they should grow and change in the future, and in turn, it gives a community a voice. So as mentioned earlier, it gives them that active leadership role. And lastly, it really creates a greater sense of community and a shared vision. So a little bit more information about project one is developing a work plan. So several months back, in October, staff requested a proposal from HEC, and the proposal was to develop a phased work plan. In this work plan, they'll be utilizing strategies to engage District Three residents, and the work plan will also help clarify and prioritize what needs to be done and what they'll be working with, or who they'll be working with, would be city, business, and funding leaders. With a multi-phase approach consisting of five phases, work is scheduled to be completed by the end of this year. Project number two, so preparing a neighborhood plan. So staff plans to hire a consultant once the work plan is completed by HEC. The focus is on portions of District Three, which will then be determined by the assessment. Work is expected to take up to nine months to prepare. So where do we go from here? So to fund both projects, Councilman Silva is seeking city council support for utilizing ARPA funds. Project number one, the HEC work plan, is $30,000. Originally, it was $35,000, but he utilized $5,000 of his district dollars through the council district benefit program, since the first phase is already underway. Project number two is $120,000. However, that is an estimate. Please note that both projects are acceptable under ARPA funding, and it must be completed by 2024. There are three goals in the city strategic plan that both efforts align with, as you guys can see laid out here: Goals number two, three, and five. And with that, I conclude my presentation and open it up for any questions and comments.
Perfect, thank you. I'll open it up public comment. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to Councilmember Stockton.
My question is, how will this work? Can you give me an example? They're going to come in, and they're going to coordinate with the neighborhood, and the neighborhood is going to basically determine what they want in their neighborhood? And then my question after that is, how is this different or built upon the fact that we now have districts and representation for each district? What are they getting in addition to that?
Okay, so to answer your question directly, you are correct. That is the effort. That clearly defines what they're trying to do. So because the HEC portion is already underway, some of the things that they've actually implemented thus far, or engaged in thus far, were three events that just recently happened. So for instance, they've already reached out to... They spoke with community members and talked to adolescents about getting vaccinated at the April 29 Public Safety Town Hall in District Three. On May 28, they had direct feedback conversations with 10 community members who provided a vast majority of information that they can utilize in their work plan. And then just recently, at the Rocket Hill Trail Art unveiling, they distributed 17 at-home COVID tests, three food resources, two medical resources, and one finance resource. This is just a few of the things that they've done thus far. So I hope that answers your question. Are you looking more into the...
Well, my question... The reason why I'm asking the question is because I'm curious as to why this is a consultant-driven idea and not necessarily a staff one or something that falls within an existing department that we have here at the city.
Understood.
So if I could expand on the concept a little bit. So as far as the consulting, using the consultant in this particular regard, when Councilmember Silva was first elected, he and I sat down and talked about how do we increase the engagement in this district and to address some of those... Some of the challenges in the district. And it actually turns out that when I accompanied quite a few of you to the League of Cities Conference in Sacramento, there was a presentation from this particular consultant in the city that I just happened to previously work for that was doing an update on this particular concept. And it's all about building neighborhood capacity, and as Rika mentioned, it's all about engaging the community and finding out what they want, what their needs are. You know, the presentation focused on, you know, sometimes we think we have an idea of what they really want, when in fact, when you talk to those folks, it's really something even more simple or more complex, but we don't know that without reaching out to them. And it's all about building neighborhood champions and getting the community to understand the services provided by the city and to work collaboratively together. Now, one of the things that I've been talking to council individually about is the possibility in the next phase of our community engagement efforts is the possibility of neighborhood associations, which goes beyond even, you know, the district concept. It's about, again, building neighborhood capacity, finding those neighborhood champions that are... Want to be engaged and active in their community. And so the combination of the community engagement efforts that we're trying to put together, talking with this consultant who just so happens to live in this area and is a fan of Vacaville, sees the... Saw the opportunity to do that, build the capacity there. The other part that this consultant brings that staff does not is connections with other agencies, other nonprofit providers, other resource centers, such as, you know, localized and focused connections with the medical community, the grocery store providers, financial institutions, all those types of things. And so to me, in my experience being a former community development director, this is absolutely the type of project that fits into the district dollar program, if you will, in terms of building capacity to find those neighborhood champions. And it plays very nicely into the next part of the councilman's request, which is the preparation of a neighborhood plan. The neighborhood plan is much like a smaller, specific plan. And the specific plan examples that, you know, this council is probably most familiar with is our downtown specific plan, our Green Tree specific plan, Roberts Ranch specific plan. Those are, in some of those cases, raw land that start fresh. The neighborhood plan goes into an existing neighborhood and, again, looks at what the current zoning, general plan designations, the vision is, and says, okay, what's working, what's not working? But more importantly, what do the community residents foresee that they would like to see something different? And so before you can start working on that technical aspect of the plan, you really need to build that capacity. You need to build those champions and find out what is the voice out there. And so one kind of builds off the other. And so because that particular district has, you know, some of our older neighborhoods that have some issues and challenges that they'd like to address, this is something that the councilman and I and other staff have been talking about for a while now. And so that's how we got connected with HEC, and then the idea of a neighborhood plan to take it to the next level.
So would the amount being requested go toward the completion of this plan, or is this going to be an ongoing expense? I clearly recognize the need for community engagement in bettering the Markham neighborhood, which is what I'm assuming in this area. I have a portion of the Markham neighborhood. I have constituents there that I care about, that I could see wanting to be very engaged in this. I guess the point of my question is, going through this consultant, is this only going to be for a year, or is this going to be something that we re-up every single year? And that's the reason why I was asking, why not somebody that we hire with staff that can work and find out, you know, and navigate kind of the complexity of all of these moving parts? You talked about healthcare, you talked about parks, you talked about infill, you've talked about, you know, setting up community meetings and all of those things. Is that going to be something that happens in a year? What's the timeframe for this? That's why I'm asking whether or not it should be a staff person or not.
Fair question. So no, the intent is that HEC would complete their deliverables by the end of this year and working with the councilman on that particular project. And then from there, I don't see this turning into an annual thing for that particular consultant. It would be part of the deliverables, if I'm not mistaken, is that they build in a process for ongoing, you know, support internally to the neighborhood to keep this activity or this group going. And then that, again, leads into the other effort that I'm hoping to introduce next year for all the districts is, you know, the concept of neighborhood associations.
Sure.
But I think this is just the one-time request. Of course, Councilmember Silva's on the line and can answer questions as well in terms of his intentions for this, but as far as my understanding of this particular request before you tonight, it's the one-time thing that's to be completed by the end of this year. That's for project one. Project two, and the councilman can speak to this perhaps better, but the project two is the next step, as I mentioned, and we would have to go out and get, you know, scope it, bring in consultants, because that is not something that is in the capacity that we have on staff. I mean, it's essentially a focus, you know, micro-specific plan, if you will. And depending on the scope and size of that effort, that could affect the timing and the potential cost of that. So I think this is kind of a placeholder because of the request to use ARPA funding, and that does have a limited timeframe on which it can be used.
Okay, because if this is something that's successful in that neighborhood, I could see there being a benefit to have a full-time staff person maybe for each district, certainly this one, or at least starting with here, to see if that's something that we can build upon to make sure that we're engaging our citizens as well. So that's the only reason why I asked about the staff stuff, just because, you know, this may take more than a year. This may take more than a couple of years, and if we can find people that are embedded within these different neighborhoods that need the help, I think there's some value to having them or not rushing them as well.
Well, I appreciate the support and the comments. What I'd like to suggest in that regard for, at this stage, is that I think you have these independent projects for this district, and I think, you know, the plan is reasonable as staff brings back the idea of taking the neighborhood association and community engagement to that next level citywide. That will be something that we will include as part of that discussion for council's consideration in terms of how do we go ahead and implement this? We don't want to present something to the council as a program and then not be able to have the resources or the wherewithal to pull it off. So I appreciate the inquiry.
So the findings that are generated through this consultant are going to be brought back to council for action?
So not necessarily. It depends on what the outcomes of those are, because they could be very focused... It depends on what the outcomes of those are, because they could be very focused on the community and what the community can do to help themselves. And if that's the case, then there wouldn't be a reason for it. But if the report does present some conclusions that require new programs or services or capital improvements, then obviously those would have to come back as part of a budget request at that future time for council's discussion.
Okay, thank you.
This sounds fantastic, and I I think it's a great idea. My concern is, we went into districts because districts aren't being represented equally. I don't know why we would just do District Three. Why aren't we just doing every district? It seems like this is a great idea for every district. Everybody should be involved. Everybody should be doing their own district thing.
Don't necessarily disagree. I think what we see this as an opportunity for is really kind of a pilot project, project, if you will, with regards to the HEC efforts in terms of engaging and building neighborhood Honestly, I'm not ready for a citywide effort, and and Councilman Silva was very interested in in getting out there and connecting with the community ahead of the 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 plan that I'm hoping to bring to you on a later next year. As far as neighborhood plans and and that type of level of project, those really are driven by the need within the particular district. And I would suggest that not all the council's districts are in need of of a neighborhood plan or would benefit from neighborhood plan. But that's something that we can certainly talk about. But I think that this is actually a potential opportunity for us to use these as pilot programs and see just exactly the effectiveness of these to and see where they could be applied elsewhere in the city.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yeah, similar comments, I think, to to Councilmember Stockton and Mary. Although I totally understand and share Aaron's sentiment, I think this is a really cool pilot, a really cool test to pilot this process. Really excited to see what it what happens in in District Three. I think it's it's much needed. I do think to to the same point as some of my peers, there is some probably utility or learning moments for the rest of us, so super excited. I mean, to the to the extent that I don't want to be impugn any of the decision-making process, but I'd love to see the process that I be involved as much as I can to follow so I can learn from my district. So I don't know if we could be, you know, if documents can be shared or progress or updates, you know, kind of doing my own thing in District Four right now with another consultant. So I think the more we can cross-pollinate and share, the better. So I I just, I don't know how you can do that without violating Brown Act. I don't want to get in Mike's or his district's residents' way. I just would love to hear how it's going, because I think this could be a model for us to kind of roll out across the districts as we build up time and capacity. I have some experience with HSC from another county, from from my day job. They're great. They've got some really talented folks. I think you have to be really, really careful and direct and descriptive on your scope, though. So I think Councilmember Silva or staff, whoever's working on this, really be clear about what you want. You know, I I think we, they're very health-focused, which is great, but I I don't think in listening to my discussions from the neighborhood and Councilmember Silva, health is the only aspect there. I think there's some other equity and and other challenges. So I'd be really clear on the scope of the study, the outcomes you're looking for, and have not be narrowed to a strictly health focus, because I don't think you'll get the results you're kind of looking for based on my past experience, but I'm sure every project's a little different. It's really hard to get good public feedback, honestly. It's you would throw these outreach events and you invite people and you send out email threads. I mean, it's hard enough just to get people to vote. I mean, we had twenty seventeen percent turnout or something. So I think things like this are important, you know, people, especially folks that are working two jobs, they're busy. It's hard to engage with folks and see what they want, need, you know. And so I think sometimes you have to bring in consultants or professionals or folks that are good at this. Rika has been amazing, but we we can't clone Rika, and there's only so many staff that we can have to do that. So I do think it's smart. And and again, it's that's been one of the most enlightening and kind of frustrating things being on council, is you expect people to want to give you tons of feedback, but it's very hard to get that out of folks. And so what happens is you get a few vocal folks that dominate the discussion, and you don't really kind of suss out what's needed. So I think this process is is also great for that, because it helps kind of really collect that feedback. But again, being very direct and explicit in terms of what you're expecting from those consultants, because, you know, you'll you'll expect to get X and you'll get Y, and Y is not helpful sometimes. The last question I had is probably for you, Rika. Can you break down the hundred and twenty thousand? Like, what is that? What's in that? The thirty K to me makes sense for, you know, consulting and a plan, but what is in the hundred and twenty thousand dollar?
It's really just an, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, it's really just an estimated cost. It's the consultant fees. I don't have a total breakdown for that. The only breakdown that I have right now is HEC, because we engaged in a in an agreement with them, which is an attachment to the staff report. But as far as the consultants work for the neighborhood plan itself, I unfortunately don't have that information unless we want to clarify or define any further from our city manager.
Could we break it up and bring it back?
No. So the the hundred and twenty really represents, so our community development director, who worked in a city that is very familiar with neighborhood plans, reached out to, you know, some colleagues and basically asked, you know, here's my situation, here's kind of the the size and and scope of issues, what would a ballpark cost be? So I I'm not willing to 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 go to bat and say that that's the final dollar amount for you, because again, depending on the scope and and size and magnitude of the changes that are sought by the community and and the councilmen, it it could be more, it could be less. So what I would suggest is, is that if the council's supportive of an idea of, you know, committing funding to that project, we can either, you know, alloc, you know, basically earmark this amount, and then when the time comes to begin that project after completing the 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 first project, and there's a desire to go out, then we would bring, you know, we would go out with the RFP, we would bring that back to council and ask for scope of services, and then ask for any augmentations at that time.
Can we do one-twenty not to exceed? And then if it does, he has to bring it back? You you just don't want to do a, like, oh, okay, and then it comes out to five hundred?
No, I understand. That's what I'm saying. I I think either way gets us there. But again, the councilman's on the line, and and, you know, he can share his thoughts on that as well.
We're gonna get to him.
And really quickly, so it sounds like you're generally supportive, and you've kind of engineered this, though. So from the staff perspective, it sounds like this is?
I think both of these tools, both of these projects are very effective planning tools that accomplish what the councilman's seeking to to achieve in that district.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wiley?
I just have a few kind of random thoughts about the whole thing. You know, public engagement and capacity building is something that everybody needs. I mean, we have these meetings, and we have a few people from the public here, but not very many. So there were a few people speaking on homelessness, support of things, so that's great, you know, but I don't see very many people from my district here or other districts. So I I think it's a great plan to try to build capacity in District Three and in other districts as well. And that's one reason why I think we have the new public information officer and trying to get things cooking with residents across Vacaville. But I know it's harder in some areas than other. So one question I have, in District Six, there's one pretty active neighborhood association, and there's other groups that have said, we want to do that, too. Can you work with us? Does District C Three have some current neighborhood groups that are that are active? Or is there, like, not much at all in the district that's active as far as neighborhood groups go?
To the best of our knowledge, there's nothing that's active right now. So that's actually what we're trying to do, is build these neighborhood champions and develop something that what you have in District Six.
All right. And then the other thing I noticed that you said it needed to be finished by 2024. So if the first part is finished by December, then we he would have two years to do the neighborhood plan and have it completed or just have it in the works?
The document would have to be a deliverable, so it would have to be completed by the end of 2024.
Hey, so that that, the way things move sometime, that is kind of pushing it maybe a little bit. And I I just wondered versus, you know, if it is a district thing, district dollars versus ARPA, it's a really good project, but should part of it be with district dollars? That's just something that I want to kind of throw out and and think about. And then we allocated some money for ARPA, so how much is in our unallocated ARPA money right now if we're considering spending this hundred and twenty thousand plus the fifty thousand or thirty thousand or whichever it was?
We we generally have about two and a half to four million that we still need to come back to council for future discussions about how to allocate that.
All right, all right. So I think it would be a great project. Those were just some thoughts I had about that.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, thank you. So you mentioned earlier, you mentioned that, was it the HEC that's probably good use for district dollars? And because you mentioned something would be useful.
No, I'm I'm staying out of which pot of money is used for this effort. I'm simply saying that as a former community development director, these two projects are worthwhile planning projects to engage the community and look at reinvestment and redevelopment opportunities.
Okay. And yeah, just being in Vacaville, and then, like, my dad used to live off Callan Street, so I'm very familiar with that whole area as well. It's like, not much has changed there since the mid-'90s, since I lived off that street. And you can definitely use some type of study or engagement to try to improve the community there. So yeah, I think both these are needed, and we've discussed neighborhood associations. District Five is, I'm pretty beneficial where it's not a lot going, it doesn't need a whole lot like District Three does or some areas of District Four, because it's fairly established and pretty well off. Yeah, and I don't really have many questions.
Okay. Councilmember Silva, did you want to comment?
Yeah, thank you. Great discussion. Appreciate all the feedback. I just, you know, kind of want to add that this isn't just a, you know, I I respect, so number one, thanks staff for putting everything together. Great, great discussion, great, I know we've been digging at this for quite a while now. A lot of passionate discussions behind closed doors to get to this point. And kind of where, you know, one of the things that during the strategic plan, they asked us is, or asked, I think they asked all of us, but the consultant asked me, is what are you doing to make sure that you, what do you do to make sure that you look out for other districts and not just your just district? And I thought it was a very interesting question and also a challenging question, because in many ways, we're elected by folks within that specific boundary, but we all, you know, I stand by every single one of you. You all love our community. We all love our community, our city, and we want what's best for for all of us. And there's a lot of challenges with that, right? So to me, you know, while in many ways this is is targeting an area that has a higher higher concentration of of low-income or deep-restricted units, I I'm starting to kind of even resent like the District Three connotation, notation, respectively, for that, because in many ways, as Councilmember Stockton pointed out, it also shares up, District One actually shares a component of all of that. So I really encourage everybody, not just our council, but the the staff in city, to really look at this as a city of Vacaville, opportunity to really empower folks that are that that have continued to find their voice, but need some help to kind of corral that, to kind of provide some type of structure in that and turn that into something that's positive, more more sustainable is really the key, I like the the keyword I like to use, and how and how that can, you know, essentially pay dividends moving forward. You know, I I don't want to go too far on into this, but I just, you know, for me, I I see a lot of unique opportunities within that respective neighborhood, which would probably be Markham. I also see opportunities that stretch over across the freeway into the Aegean Way and how we can interconnect communities through there and the different amenities that we're that a lot of us are interested in investing and expanding on. So that's really the only thing that I that I can add. Ricky did an awesome job, and thank you, City Manager Aaron, for for relaying a lot of what I didn't have to. The only other thing that I wanted to add to this discussion is that, you know, as was a, one of the things was trying to get it kick-started, right? So there's a lot of things that, there are a lot of small, small, small projects that I could do to have a high impact with respect to our community dollars. So that's that five thousand dollars, I'm also going to request council to support adding that additional five thousand that was used for measure from our Measure M allocated funds and using the ARPA funds to reimburse that. So let me clarify what I just said there. So what I'm asking council support for is if they're going to support the proposal as is, to also add on reimbursing five thousand from from the district funds, from the ARPA, from the ARPA funds, because with respect, that way I can use those funds to better essentially support whatever comes out of the HEC feedback, based on the community's feedback, that wouldn't, that would be more qualified to use under our Measure M and Community District Dollar Plan that wouldn't be eligible under the ARPA funds. And I apologize, guys, I've got this crazy storm going on out here.
I I just figured you're sitting on the beach, that's why I made you go last.
No, not at all.
I read the recommendation. I still have two more speakers, but are we going to make motion tonight to approve as listed? Or are we just giving direction that we all think this is a great idea?
No, we'd actually be seeking your direction on whether or not council is comfortable using ARPA funding and as the councilman just requested to?
Use them back as five thousand.
To for thirty-five thousand total for the HEC project, and we know that that is the finite amount. And then allocate a hundred and twenty for the preparation of a neighborhood plan. And per your suggestion, we can certainly say not to exceed, and then if we go out through that process and it does exceed that, we can come back and ask for?
That's gonna be in a form of motion.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, it's just kind of a question, because I know with district dollars, what's a process for allocating?
You're okay.
Like, as mentioned, that we can allocate some of our funds to help out other districts' projects. Is that just something we can do individually as councilmembers? Is that something that needs to be brought up?
Well, we haven't really gotten to that part of the project process, but no, when we when we presented the guidelines, if you will, for the use of community district dollars and using funds towards another project, I don't know that that was necessarily requiring consent by council.
Okay.
As long as it fell within the criteria for the use of district dollars and you wanted to partner your funds with another councilmembers, that's fine.
Okay.
Are you gonna offer your money?
Yeah, so one thing for Mike's five grand, just make things a little bit more equitable. He can transfer five from mine to offset his, that we don't worry about dealing Measure M funds or anything like that. I can just?
You want that mess?
Well, I I would suggest, depending on the the larger picture conversation about using ARPA funds, if the council's supportive of of the request to use ARPA funding for both projects, I would say, keep your five thousand. You you and Councilmember Silva can work that.
Plus, make Mike feel bad. If you pay nothing. Councilmember Stockton?
I was gonna say something similar. I would be willing to match. Part part of part of my constituents live in that area. I'd be happy to contribute money of my district dollars. I think that ARPA for the for the remainder of the portion, I don't really have an issue with that. If this works, though, then I will tell you, I'm gonna probably come back to staff and talk about a staffer for each district that can focus on a lot of the the criteria that you're looking for in this in this project. So very interested to see how it turns out. I hope it's successful, and I think it might be able to pave the way for us to build something into this district philosophy that helps us connect with our constituents.
Councilmember Sullivan, you can't offer five thousand.
You're gonna hate this, Roy.
Cannot offer.
Hate it. So so?
Offer ten.
So everyone might hate this, but so we we have this this whole, like, district versus anti-district discussion, and we're fighting, we're worried about not sharing, worried about sharing. And you guys may think I'm stupid, this is terrible, but what if we chipped in five to cover the HEC from our districts? All of us chip in five, and then a hundred and twenty from the ARPA, and then we call it a day. And then Mike chips in his five, we all chip in five, that covers the thirty-five from our district funds. And then the hundred and twenty comes from ARPA. And then we all learn from this. And then Roy, when you come back for staff, you know, you've got a little leverage there and 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 some discussion, and then we show that we're sharing, it's not district, it's not us versus everyone saying, look, we value those folks in this district, and it's kind of a cross-pollination. I think we can all chip five out. The fiscal year resets in two weeks. I mean, what's what's five K between districts, between friends? That, I don't know, that could be crazy.
I'll make that motion. And we'll do not to exceed a hundred and twenty, but bring it back. Look at that. The best team ever.
Teamwork, teamwork.
I love the suggestion, can we please keep what ARPA?
What does he want now?
I love I love the love, but then, you know, like, that's our local dollars, and we can, I think we're we're more limited. can, I think we're, we're more limited with ARPA than we are with our measure M.
Oh, he wants to keep his 5,000?
Oh.
I'll amend my motion, we'll just go with ARPA funds and the not to exceed 120. It was a great, it was a great try, but Mike shot it down just for the record. Can we have a roll call vote? Did I get a second again?
We need to clarify the second on that, please.
I'll second, I'll, I'll second.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
If he says no.
Yes, absolutely, thank you all for this.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
May I roll it?
Yes. All right. Gee, Mr. City Manager. I think, yeah, gee.
Okay, this last item before you is a discussion on campaign contribution limits and regulations for candidates for city office. Melinda Stewart, your city attorney, and Michelle Thornburg, your city clerk have been working on this for quite a while. Ms. Stewart is going to make the presentation.
Your mic's hot.
It's on or off?
It's on.
Thank you.
All right, this is a new experience for me being down here with all this. I think I got it though. Good evening once again, as the city manager mentioned, the item before you at this time tonight is the status update on the campaign contribution limits ordinance that the city council passed last January 2021. So with the pending election in November 2022, we thought that this would be a good opportunity to provide the city council with a refresher on the ordinance and answer some outstanding By way of background, prior to January 1st, 2021, the state did not place any contribution limits on campaigns for local offices such as the city council or board of supervisors. And while local agencies could impose their own limits, the city of Vacaville never regulated or limited campaign contributions. On January 1st, 2021, AB 571 became effective imposing contribution limits on local campaigns if the local agency had not adopted its own contribution limits. The state default contribution limits for local campaigns are the same as are applicable to candidates for state elective offices such as the assembly or the state senate and currently those are $4,900 per contribution per election. So at that time in late 20 and early 2021, in anticipation of the special election that was coming up to fill a vacancy, the city council adopted the current campaign contribution limits, which have been effective since February 11th, 2021. And those current limits are $1,000 per, per contributor, per election for candidates that are running for by district elections or by district offices and 2,500 for candidates that are running for at-large elective offices, that would be mayor, city clerk and city treasurer. This is a blanket limitation, it applies equally to every source of contribution, whether it's an individual, a corporation, a PAC, an independent expenditure committee or the like. One question that did come up as we were preparing for this is how rollover contributions, contributions are treated? Rollover contribution, contribution, sorry, meaning funds from a candidate's current campaign rolling over to a future campaign for the same candidate if there are unused or unexpended funds at the conclusion of that particular election. So we've confirmed that those rollovers are allowed, there are certain specified timeframes in which they can happen and there are specified procedures in which they can happen, but the transferred contributions must be attributed to specific contributors using specific accounting methods and they're subject to the same contribution limits. So all of the funds can be transferred, but the contributor, contributors are tracked. So last time this item was before the council, there were a couple of questions about the treatment of independent expenditure committees and similar PACs that are not controlled by the candidate. And so for those, we'll call them I E Cs, their direct contributions to candidates are subject to the contribution limits. So an independent committee can only contribute $1,000 or, or $2,500 depending on the, on the campaign. However, the city cannot limit the amount of contributions to those I E Cs or the expenditures by those independent committees. The committees are also required to, to report their donations and expenditures. So what are the consequences of violating the contribution limits? Because Vacaville has adopted our own limits, the city is the enforcement agency and the potential penalties include criminal prosecution as a misdemeanor or more likely administrative fines of up to $1,000 per violation. If the city had not adopted its own campaign contribution limits, then the F P P C limits would be the default, the F P P C would be the enforcement authority. Potential penalties under the F P P C enforcement authority include criminal penalties as well as a prohibition, a potential prohibition of holding elective office for four years following any conviction if they pursue a criminal penalty or administrative penalties of up to $5,000 per violation. And in both cases, regardless of the enforcement authority, there is always the potential for a citizen's lawsuit to either stop current alleged violations or to compel compliance with the, the campaign limits. Also in the past, there have been questions about potential conflicts of interest created by campaign contributions. The Political Reform Act does address this concern to a certain extent. As you'll see on the slide, officers of agencies may not solicit or accept donations of more than $250 if there's a, a decision currently pending before the agency or within three months following a decision. Also recusal from certain decisions if a public official received campaign contributions of more than $250 within 12 months before the decision is required, recusal is required. However, this applies to agencies whose members are not directly elected. So in our case, that would be the Planning Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, Solano Transportation Authority, those types. It does not apply to bodies whose members are completely elected, such as the city council. So, so right now the city, city council members that are running for, for office would not have to disclose if they received a campaign contribution from somebody that's had a pending application before the city council. So there is current legislation pending that would remove that exemption and it would apply across the board. And so lastly, while the Political Reform Act does address conflicts as I just suggested, it really focuses on reporting and has stringent reporting requirements and talking with some experts in, in the industry, they say that in our system, really the transparency and being vigilant about following the reporting is the best way to, to guard against campaign corruption. So that concludes our presentation, no action is required at this time, but both the city clerk and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
You know, it was, I'm trying to think of a good word to use, but it was disappointing that, that we took the action and I know that we, we did it by the, well, it wasn't the entire body, I think we were missing one person at the time, but, and I stated it at that time, when you start to put restrictions and we see it all over the state of California, you start to put restrictions on people, they find other ways to go out and raise that money and sometimes even more money and then things really become dirty and then there's the I E S that people run slander campaigns and it becomes really like dark money. And it was disappointing because I've watched so many years, the city of Vacaville, unlimited, it was unlimited and I don't think anyone up here has ever taken in, you know, gobs amount. I've seen other cities and I won't name any of it, but I've seen other cities take a ton of money and, you know, I think the largest amount I ever raised, you know, monetarily was, you know, maybe 20, 30, 40,000. I've seen other municipalities within the region, I'll say, that are way over 100,000 dollars for something similar to the size that we are. However, we took the step and we did it. It's just unfortunate because I think that it drives everybody underground and then it drives these I E S and I've already heard and I heard during his campaign, people starting to put these I E S together and, and it's, it's unfortunate, we are where we are. My question would be, and it was back on, I think, number two slide, so if you're transferring, so if, I'm district one, city council member and I decide to run for city clerk and I take in $2,500 from multiple sources and then I lose to our city clerk because you probably would if you ran against her. Then you stop and you're like, okay, well, I want to roll that back over now to my city council, you're saying that's completely legal?
It's completely legal?
Yeah.
Well, so my understanding, I might, I didn't look into the specifics of changing from one type of, of office to another type of office, but yes, controlled committees of a candidate can't, they can roll that, contributions from that controlled committee into another controlled committee of the same candidate. Now they use the word candidate, so again, I don't know if it would apply for a candidate for city clerk to a candidate for city council, but there is, but there is a process to do that.
Because I know the state, if you, and I'm going to use an assembly woman here in our region, you know, she got contributions for her mayor, then she decided to run for assembly and she transferred all that over to her assembly account, but those dollars actually counted towards her assembly dollars. So if you gave her $500 for her mayor, you couldn't then give her, you know, 4,900, but there's a small contributor of 9,700, you couldn't give her that much, you would have to subtract what you gave her for mayor, that.
That is the same situation here with these transfers that I was talking about.
So if you, so if you accumulated a bunch of money to run for city clerk, then you went back, she took 2,500, but there's only a thousand dollar donation, what do you have to do, give all the money back if you, I know this is probably complex, but.
Yeah, I believe, so, so if you don't, if you don't transfer it over to another.
Right, if you're, if you're going back and putting it back into your city council district one, sorry, account, then you took a lot of $2,500 donations from folks, you went back to run for your own council seat, which only has a thousand dollar donation, would you have to turn around and roll that money back?
We'd probably have to look into how that would work.
Just, it's weird with the transfers.
It is, it is a little different.
Because I, I assumed immediately after we had done this back in February, I think you said, was once you did that, then when you would say jump to another thing, you couldn't take your city council money because you couldn't give yourself more than $1,000 out of that city council, but you're saying it's wide open?
Well, it is subject to the campaign contribution limitation that's in effect. So you would have, you would have a difficult situation if you went from, from an at-large position to a district, a by district position.
Right.
I, I don't, I, you know, I haven't looked into how the law would, would treat that, but I will say that the, the campaign contribution limits would still be in effect. So, and there's a whole accounting methodology that you have to designate before you do that transfer.
I won't go deeper. I'm sure that I have councilmember Sullivan.
A couple of questions, this only applies to city, right? Not the school board or other candidates in the city?
Correct, our, our limits, yes.
And then my second question, and can you walk me through again the three month window? So this is what really bugs me, right? Like we have election cycles where a special interest or someone with a big project will donate thousands and thousands of dollars to a council member knowing the votes coming up in three, four, five, six months and lo and behold, that council member votes for that project and what, you know, it happens. So that is not illegal is what you're saying, or that's not a conflict of interest, or that person doesn't have to declare, there, there's nothing wrong with that scenario under the law or the policy today?
Today, as it currently exists, for, for bodies that are solely elected, so for, for the city council.
And you said the state is looking at tightening that up potentially?
Yes, yes.
Do we have the option as a city to add that to our policy now in advance of that?
That's something we'd need to look into, but I believe so, I believe we could amend our ordinance.
Because that was more the root of my issue originally is where the money's coming from, what the special interests are. I sort of agree with the mayor in the sense that it's just going to force more of these independent expenditure committees or groups that are supporting Sally Sue that, you know, say they're not with Sally Sue, but they really are and they're just going to funnel money in kind in other ways, they're going to do all their science and all their advertising and their mailers, but they're not Sally Sue's campaign and so then it just kind of handcuffs the folks that, that play by the rules. I, I do sort of, I mean, there's a couple scenarios where the situation the mayor pointed out as well, with the 2,500 down to 1,000, I mean, that probably is something we need to suss out. I mean, we could always make the whole thing just one level or, but also it's a big difference between by district or electoral. I don't know, it's just, I, I appreciate the concept of the policy and I know I was a proponent of some components of it, I just, for me, it's just the transparent and the public education piece, it's just, especially when you're campaigning, you see it and you read the forums and you see who's given what and you go back on the dais and you see who's voting for what and you, it's just, it's unfortunate, there's not a better way to educate the public because I think that's really the root of what I wanted out of this whole policy and not saying staff didn't do a great job, he did a spectacular job, it's just really hard to nail that down. And like you said, you know, good record keeping and a diligent public is the best way, but the public's not that diligent, I mean, there's only so many folks that, that actually take the time to dive into those things and, you know, I've seen some stuff bought and paid for in my, my time as elected official, not just here with the school board and everywhere else and I'm not saying here, I'm saying with peers and in the system and it's unfortunate because it happens on a regular basis and, you know, for a couple thousand bucks, you've got a multimillion dollar decision coming up, you're going to vote in one way or the other and it's, it's a shame that happens, but it does happen. And so I appreciate the effort, I appreciate the detail, you know, I wish there was a better way to educate folks, but I think we, we gave it the college try per se, so thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you for the information and I just want to remind people, when we voted this in, it was like the first vote, I think, for four new people on the council, having just gone through a campaign but not being, suppose that we had to vote on this, you know, then, so now that we have had time to go back and look at it, I think that it's not really the best thing. And I remember the mayor saying at the time, no, we don't want to have these limits because of, you know, just the limitations that it has and, and then looking at everything. So when we were taking the original vote and you said at the beginning, you know, that it does apply to political action committees, it does apply to political action committees that are working with the candidate, but the whole bugaboo is those independent expenditures and just for people's information, the candidate and the independent expenditure cannot be in communication, otherwise it's not an independent expenditure, so the candidate really doesn't have control over what's being said, but I have been on the receiving end of mailer after mailer after mailer from groups in support of a candidate that really wasn't funded by that candidate, but by the group. So I really feel like that this isn't solving anything and so I would like to look at it again with higher numbers or with some more flexibility and not say, well, here we did this, we're stuck with it because we can go back and look at it again and so I would really suggest doing that. And the other thing that I want to just reiterate, the difference between political action and independent expenditures, the other thing that this does not, it does not limit, if you are a candidate and you need to loan yourself money, you're not tied into, oh, I can only loan myself $1,000, you can loan yourself more if you need to, you know, kickstart getting signs or whatever. It has to be, all be reported, it's all reported, but that is not part of this limitation, is that correct?
Right, that is.
And $1,000 is per person, not, that's not all you can raise.
Correct, per, per person. Also, I will, I will say that the amount of the limit can be changed by resolution, you don't have to go through a whole ordinance change to do that.
So I would be in support of having the council look at the amount again and maybe considering it as a resolution in the future.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Okay, thank you. So I can address that, I was the recipient of this wonderful conversation, so trust me, you can donate a lot of money to yourself because I had to do it because of the actions. So it was, I feel like it was a, I feel like it was just like a week ago.
and maybe considering it as a resolution in the future.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Okay, thank you. So I can address that. I was the recipient of this wonderful conversation. So trust me, you can donate a lot of money to yourself. Because I had to do it because of the actions. So it was, I feel like it was a, I feel like it was just like a week ago, and now I'm ready to run again. It was the big science. I was, you know, when I saw the agenda, I was like, wow, I was the science experiment. You know, we have, we did have four new council members. We came from a situation where all of a sudden, I am right now, it's in December, and listening, sitting right over there, to the rules. Went from never having campaign limits in City Vacville to, oh, boy, this is a special election. Mitch is gone, and who's going to come? And wow, bam, find, find ways to mitigate big donors and this and that, special interests. And that thousand-dollar hit. And it was interesting, because then you didn't have to run with that. You know, it, it would have helped if the elected officials who put the rules in effect had to feel the ramifications of their decisions. But I did. So I'm running with knowing what it felt like to be in COVID, barely go talk to people. And no one ever had the feeling of having limits except for me and having to run. So it, it does, it's ironic now that I'm running again, plus three people. And now the idea seems pretty bad. And so we're going to lift it, I guarantee. But I would never want someone to have to go through what I did and having to be limited. And I have to have to work really hard. And then, yeah, it, it was a weird feeling. So I, I really, I know it's a lot of concern, but now this is your guys' turn, it, it feels different. So I just want to acknowledge that. So when you, you say these things, like, it's kind of the butterfly effect. Sometimes your actions seem good, but then the consequences, it's like, wow, this could hurt you, this could hurt you too. So we'll move forward, this will be changed. Because you'll, you'll see how it's hurt yourself and kind of self-preservation, the limit will be raised. But yeah, I had, I had to self-fund a lot of it. But it was very liberating. Because I didn't have to answer to, to a lot of people. I didn't have to talk to people I didn't want to talk to. I'd have to bend if I want to support public safety, if I want to support what I believed in. I did, I didn't give a, I didn't care, I made my thought. So it is liberating to have the ability to fund yourself and say, forget you, who you don't want to talk to or support. So it did, it does have benefits to not be able to take that large amount of money from people. But at the same time, you want the opportunity to. But so it's just, my, my two cents for being, being the experiment for the city. It, it does have its benefits and its drawbacks.
It worked out for you, though?
It did.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yeah, so, I mean, I have feedbacks about, but yeah, there's, I'm both, like most things with campaigns. And it's kind of double-edged sword, whether you're looking at contribution limits or term limits. There's always going to be some positives and negatives. For example, the district electoral limit is none of my donations even came close to this limit. And so like, I assume for most people on here, like, vast majority of people want to donate at the ninety-nine-dollar limit so they don't have to be put on your forms and know who they gave contributions to. And then for the PACs, they're going to spend the same amount of money regardless, whether they're donating it in dollar amounts that hit that limit or they do independent expenditures. It's just, yeah, easier to track if they do it on, yeah, do it as a proper donation. And there's a big document, there's a nonprofit that goes out and does the studies, which shows every city in the state and country which has contribution limits, what those limits are. And we're kind of somewhere in the middle-ish of what the, what those are. So ideally, yeah, we can look at what cities have the highest limits. And like, yeah, we did do it for a special election, but that's kind of a very small sample. So I'm really curious as to what it looks like when there's multiple people running for, if the independent expenditures are actually going to truly be an issue? Or if it's just what we've always seen in the past, if it actually changed anything on that level? But I, I think this won't really change campaigns as a whole, just because most contributions won't even come up to this limit.
Can't track, can't track the IEs compared?
Yeah.
I think it's more, I guess, it sounds good.
Yeah, it's more of a qualitative thing, like what you actually see on the public. Do you see more independent signs popping up versus what we've seen in previous elections?
I do find it funny that San Francisco supervisor, obviously, large city, nine-hundred-dollar max. But they raise millions with all these other campaigns. Councilmember Stockton.
So I, I believe I take kind of the opposite approach as the Vice Mayor. I, I think that these limits go against all the other comments that we heard today, which is, is, we want, if, if we are concerned about people being bought and paid for, which I hope doesn't happen, but I would rather know it based upon being able to see who they're taking money for. I think what happened to Greg was absolutely appalling. He had a shotgun, special election with a limited amount of time. And if he didn't take, you know, money out of his kids' accounts or, or money that he could have spent on his family or reinvested in his business, he may not be sitting here, but he cared enough to do it. And it's, so it's disappointing that he went through that, but I think we should learn from it. Because I don't like the independent expenditures. I don't like it at all. I think, I think it creates more problems than it's worth. And I know that the idea was good. I, I understand that in a perfect ideal world, you know, that wouldn't happen per se. And, but, but I think the answer to this is to remove the restrictions so that it's easier for people to collect and document who they get money for. So that that way, if you want to look at conflicts of interest before we vote on different things, the data's there. Because if there's an independent expenditure, you're never going to find it.
Councilmember Sullivan.
And I, I think I, I agree with, with Councilmember Stockton a little bit. The issue for me is not necessarily the campaign contribution, it's the limit, it's not even the dollar. It's who behind the cause is supporting you and making you vote in one way or the other, or making it appear that way. And there's not a moral obligation or a legal requirement or, you know, but it happens all the time. You know, whether it's a local service club, you know, it's a local political organization, a local labor group, the Chamber of Commerce, all these different groups give money. And then you get up and get on council and you vote on these millions of dollars in contracts or thousands of dollars in benefits. And for me, it's more about the disclosure. Like, I, I don't necessarily care if folks get the money, but we don't have a policy or a requirement where you say, hey, you know, by the way, the Sierra Club, you know, gave me fifty-thousand dollars last campaign cycle. Or, and now I'm voting on some, you know, Sierra Club-sponsored tree project at Lagoon Valley Park. And there's a million other examples every single day. And it really does bother me. And I've talked with Melinda a couple times about areas that I do think is a clear conflict of interest, especially with, with folks that the city does business with. And I know what happens with developers, I know what happens all over the place. And so, you know, I, I'm not saying go back to, I mean, I feel like this is what it is, but it still doesn't get to what my main concern is, is where's that money coming from? Where's that support? And where's the transparency on the dais? I think if, if you, you know, if you accepted a thousand bucks, five thousand bucks, three thousand bucks from some special interest and you're voting on that sometime within the next year or two of your cycle, you have an obligation to declare that. To me, in some of my Brown Act training and, and other area, or not Brown Act, but it, it seems like there is more responsibility to do that in some cases. But I guess if you don't own a stake or a stock or whatever. But it does feel like that's a pretty, pretty big way that your vote would be skewed. And so, you know, I don't know, I don't want to make you guys do any more work on this or not. And I'm not sure where the council's going to end up on this tonight. But for me, the conflict really is not knowing at one year. I don't care if it was fifty thousand or a thousand. I want to know who they were and they gave to you when you make that vote. And I think that we as a council should have that obligation to declare that. And we haven't done that ever since I've been here. And I've seen some pretty clear conflicts of interest that I guess didn't rise to that legal limit, but they certainly felt unethical or immoral or sleazy. And I, that's where I'm still stuck, because I don't think this quite solves it. I think that's where we're going. But I still feel sort of dissatisfied because I think people can still sneak in in numerous different ways, because there is no requirement to disclose. And I think even per voice comment, if it, I guess it is, if it is on a form and we all do our homework and we have, you know, GAFLs at every meeting, that is one way. But that wasn't happening, you know, clearly. So I don't know how we get there, but that's the bigger issue for me, is there is influence. And that influence is not being declared when we're voting. And I probably have some bias myself from donors, you know, and I, I think, so it's, it's just, that's what bugs me, I guess, about this, and I'm not sure how we fix it. But that's really at the root of why I wanted this policy originally, why, you know, I don't think we're there. And it's not staff fault, staff fault or instructions, you guys did great, this isn't criticism. It's just this is like where I'm, I'm stuck.
You know, I believe you and I debated this back in February too. And I'm not disagreeing with you, and I think you probably will agree with me. But typically, folks that come out and support you are coming out to support you because your vision, you know, we come out with a, when we come out as a candidate, we come out and say, number one, public safety, I love public safety. Well, then public safety is like, eh, that might be my guy. They put you through interviews and they listen to what you're going, you know, what your idea is. I don't think necessarily, like, the Sierra Club would come to me and go, I'm going to give you fifty-thousand dollars and you're going to vote our way every time. They're going to say, well, you're a carpenter, you like to build. I think it's people that see eye to eye and they see your vision and they see, and I'm, you know, I'm just, you know, it, I'm not saying there's people out there that don't do it. I just don't think that just correlates, like, oh, someone gave you five-hundred bucks, now you're going to go vote every time with them. Because I've voted against a lot of the people that have endorsed me and gave me money, especially over the life that I've had, sitting up here. I've had a lot of different money come in over the multiple five elections I've ran. And, you know, you don't always vote with people. And it's, people typically give you money or support you or endorse you because your vision is their vision. And not necessarily the money that they drop on you is going to be like, oh, now I have to vote everything. So, and I know you understand that. But Councilmember or Vice Mayor Roberts, I apologize.
There's another thing, you might be familiar with it, is I believe it's Sacramento, where they make the PACs register with the city, like large and small PACs. And they have to report their expenditures to the city, kind of like candidates do. So I, as far as I know, we don't have anything like that for Vacville. I don't really know how that works for that level and how it compares to independent expenditures. But I know they have to do something with the PACs to actually register with the city.
Right, yeah, we don't, we don't have anything specific for this city unless it goes through the FPPC and it's a reporting requirement.
Right, so independent expenditures are reported on the PACs Form 460s. So they do get reported. Sacramento does have, make them register. Which basically, you, they provide the FPC, FPC Form 410 to the city clerk's office. That's the registration. And when they do that, the PACs can actually donate up to twelve-thousand dollars per candidate, I think. Is it? But they still do not have to do any, they can't regulate the independent expenditures. Those are off limits.
But it shows what their expenditures are.
Yes, but you would do, you would get that anyway.
Yeah.
You just get, you don't get it until you get a Form 460 from the PAC. So I have seen where some cities have required PACs to report to all candidates when they make an independent expenditure within like five days of doing so. So they put that requirement on those people to report them out to their, to all candidates during that election.
Councilmember Stockton.
Just want to confirm that there is no limit to how much money the wealthiest person in the world can spend on their own personal campaign, correct?
Correct, well, for the city council under limits, correct.
Right, right, and so...
For their, their own donations to their own campaign.
Right, for their own personal campaign. So, I mean, essentially what I feel is that this is limiting people's ability to run against those people. And so I don't know, are we able to make motions today on, on this item? Because if so, I'd like the motion that we remove...
We'd have to bring it back, I believe.
That's, that, that's correct, you can give us direction.
I'm looking for you in your...
So my, my direction would be, I would like you to bring it back, take into some of the comments that they had about PAC reporting and some of the other things that have been mentioned. But I would like one of the options to be to remove the limit and encourage people to make donations directly to the candidates so that we know where the money's coming from. And that we're not, and, and we're not prohibiting people who aren't wealthy from running campaigns. We're going to know where the money came from when they cut the check to whatever candidate that is. And I think that is valuable. I think we should also talk about some of the things that we vote on compared to when we get money from some of the different folks on development projects and some of the other issues that were raised as well. So I, I would be interested in having that conversation and potentially removing the campaign limits so that everybody can raise money and try to run for an elected position in their local government or state government, or at least for the City Vacville.
My, my question, and I don't have a problem with us discussing it, but we're going to be filling out our forms here at the end of July. We don't have a first meeting in July. Be coming back right before, if we can even put it together. Because our window's very, very tight, and I, and I don't know what our city manager has. I know the 28th is now going to be overloaded because we pulled multiple items off this agenda.
Yeah, i- if the, if the direction from council is to explore the, the spending limits, I think we can bring that back to the June 28th meeting.
Okay.
If we start getting into other elements about what are other cities doing with all these other things, that's going to take more research. But if it's strictly just a dollar discussion, we can bring that back to council at your June 28th meeting.
Is everybody okay with that?
I have a comment.
Oh, sure, yeah, I apologize. Oops, I just rejected you, you're going to have to hit it again, I apologize.
No, sorry, of course. I, I, well, I...
I got it, go ahead.
There we go. Well, I totally appreciate it, sentiment. Honestly, I feel super sleazy removing it right before my election, you know, right before I have to run. I, I feel like that, that almost is unethical and kind of a conflict myself, timing-wise. I, I feel like I probably should feel the pain that Greg felt, my, you know, but... Honestly, I think I, if we actually came to a vote, I probably would recuse myself. I feel like that's a pretty big conflict of interest for me to remove campaign expenditure limits right before I file for my campaign. I don't disagree with it, I think the timing is terrible. And to be honest, I mean, just removing the limits for me doesn't solve my problem. And so it's, it's all the stuff Michelle was just talking about, it's all the transparency issues. I'm not voting just to remove limits and just go off on our merry way. Unless we have the whole package or other options, I'm really not interested. And so, A, it just feels really slimy for us to do that right before we file and run. I, I think it's just bad timing. So, I mean, maybe the four of us recuse ourselves and the three that aren't running take it over or something. But it just feels like terribly bad timing. I don't mind bringing this back maybe after campaign season and, and chomping at the bit a little more. You know, I, I do feel Greg's pain and I feel like I should feel it, and I, and I'm ready to do that. But I do think we still have some more work to do, and the campaign limits didn't necessarily do what I wanted to accomplish. So I just wanted to put it out. I, I appreciate Councilmember Stockton's point, but, I mean, doing this a week before I file for election, it, it fills right with conflict for me, and I'm not ready for that. And I really want to hear the other ideas that Michelle had. I think that really will get to where I'm looking for. So that's just my comment. So I don't know what the, the will of the council will, will ask folks to bring back, but I feel like timing-wise, that's, that makes me uncomfortable.
You can't have three people vote.
I think that's true.
Yeah, so...
No quorum.
I have another comment.
Um, is it off the comment that you made?
Yeah.
Then you're, oh, you're in there.
So I, I just, two wrongs don't make a right. There's an election coming up, there's people who may want to run that may not be able to finance their entire campaign. I think that we owe it to the citizens of Vacville and anybody that's interested in running against any of us at any time, that they have every ability to run a campaign and be able to represent their, their district, just like we do. And so while I respect that, and I, and I, and I think that you're a peer in, in your thinking with, with what you're saying, I still think that it's important that we address it now. And I'm not running right now. You know, and I, and I still think that's the right thing to do because it's not just about us, right? It's about anybody that's considering doing what we're doing. The other question that I had is, are we going to have a public comment on this? Or is this just for us to talk?
Yeah, no, we'll have a public comment.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I think I already did it, but we'll do it again. I think everybody's anxious to get up here. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, kind of like what I mentioned earlier, yeah, we put this in place. And, I mean, more than half the cities in California now have contribution limits. And every year, there's more and more they're adding it. There's more cities across the country that are doing it as well. And it's very hard to, because right now, it's all speculative. Like, we don't know if it'll actually even affect campaigns whatsoever in Vacville. And just doing enough, one small special election is hard to gauge what it is. Yeah, we can, that's what it is, you buy something and see, see what happens. And then, yeah, it may come up with some issues, but then we adjust as needed from there. And like I said, it probably wouldn't, like, this wouldn't affect, wouldn't have affected my campaign whatsoever.
But it might affect somebody else's.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wiley.
I think that I am also going to be running for election as well. But I think we can bring it up and say, make it effective in, you know, 2023. And so then it wouldn't be affecting for our candidate, our candidate right now, our campaigns right now. And it didn't, I didn't get any campaigns that were a thousand dollars, I mean, any donations that were a thousand dollars. You know, so I don't think that it's going to affect too many people because more than are smaller donations rather than, you know, a couple of great big ones. But I understand if we say, oh, here's, you know, four of the people have to be running, and they just changed the limit, it does look rather... four of the people have to be running and they just changed the limits, it does look rather.
Well, I, I can't do it now because he, he brought it up and I'd feel bad now.
Right, right. But I think we can change it and say it would be effective.
Why put it on the agenda now that we have a ton of things going on the agenda? We might as well just wait till January of next year when it's nice and slow again. Because we could do it at any time during that time. Election cycle won't come up till 2024. We have a little bit of time to change that dollar.
Yeah, I think it should be wait till.
There might be 40 people sitting up there making the same decision anyway.
Exactly, and they should. Okay, do you, okay, perfect. So we're doing nothing besides.
Well, I.
Not too late. Go ahead. Councilmember Richie.
So I, I appreciate the comments and back and forth, you know, it's, 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 it was more to highlight the situation. I, you know, I, I don't wanna guilt, you know, you and Twitter and Nolan or, you know, like Jayden thinks it's significant, but like that's, you can't think of that. So that's kinda like a, a narrow focus kinda vision, like, just because it didn't affect you, just to be like, that's like in life, well, that, that hurt me, but who knows if that action would hurt other people. So like, you can never think it's in a kinda narrow way. It's like, well, it didn't affect me, so it, it's obviously not a big deal. You know, all of a sudden, one person could, could do a drug and then they're cool, other person dies, it falls over. So the same thing could, in life, could be okay for one person, it would really be detrimental for another. So just to say that, it's kind of a narrow thing. But, you know, for me, it's like, I had the ability to, to do what I needed to do. I was passionate about what I wanted to do. I was passionate, wanted to serve the city. I was born and raised in, so at any means, like, at any means, I was gonna win. So I was, I was, some people say I was arrogant and bold, but like, I knew, I, I had the passion, I knew no one was gonna beat me. So I was, I was gonna do whatever I needed to do to win, and I did it. But I think other people need to have the opportunity to not be, to not be restricted. And so I, I, I would hate to have you guys have to go through what I did just to feel wrong, even, even kill. Like, everyone should have the opportunity to have every right and without limitations. Like, that, that is the American way. So to say, oh, I wanna be limited on purpose because of this or that happened, that's not right. I mean, everyone should have the opportunity to, to pursue their right to go as hard as they can, not being limited. So I think we should remove it. Just because I know the unintended consequences of having it, but doesn't mean that that should be reflected on other people. We should remove this limitation to allow everyone to freely be able to engage and have their passion shared in the community. And someone can publicly say, my God, I really like what Nolan said. I'll give Nolan 700 feet dollars and a hug. Then it's on record. It's not, it's not like, I'll give Nolan 900, 99 dollars and go find out at cafe who's running an investment expenditure and give them 4,000. It's like, the better, the more transparent we can be, the better we're gonna be. So allow people to give money freely, publicly, transparently, and without limitations. So you know, hey, I must really appreciate and value who you are, what you do, and why you believe in me, because everybody's gonna know about it. I, I think the, I think we should really not table this. I think you should go forward and like, remove it. Nolan's, Nolan, everyone should have the same even chance. Because there could be some person that's gonna run that maybe doesn't have the ability to step in in case their closest 20 friends can only bring 99 dollars, but my God, one miller is gonna bankrupt you. So we, we do need a person where it's, hey, they have an uncle or grandma that's in Tennessee that can mail them a $2,000 check because they believe in their granddaughter or their grandson. So like, we do need that ability to happen. So I would really, really.
I, I hear your plea. There's four of us up here running for election. I don't think any four of us are gonna wanna vote on that and we can't do it without those four votes. So I think it'd be a moot, moot point to bring it back on the 28th, to have all four of us to say, no. That's, that's how I see it. Unless you wanna take a vote.
I mean, Greg's running, so it sounds like he will. I mean, I, I don't.
Oh, I apologize, Greg. I forgot your, I thought you just got elected.
Yeah, I'm running again.
Well, so I appreciate all the comments. Just for the record's sake, I do believe that Councilmember Stockton attempted to make a motion. And so if that is out there, I think we need to follow through on that. Or see if he wants to continue forward with that.
You wanna pull the motion or?
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Silva.
From Mexico. I made this question for perhaps Melinda. If, if, for example, we lift, if we do not put a cap, so if we remove the cap, anybody who donated during the time when we had the ordinance in place, would that still be, would those funds be restricted during that timeframe or do those restrictions, if we increase the cap or remove the cap, would that apply across the board for any city council elected?
It, it would apply across the board if you raised the cap to another dollar amount, then say you received a $1,000 contribution from a specific source, that would just be counted toward reaching, reaching the cap. If you removed a limit altogether and, and had an ordinance that said we have an unlimited campaign contribution limit, then there, you know, then it, it wouldn't really apply. So any contributions you received, you could keep and they could contribute more. Is that?
Even though they contributed during the time of the, the cap?
Cap's gone.
Yes, because the cap, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Vice Mayor.
Question from Melinda. Is there a point where these are locked in? Like, is it once they file, they're locked into these contribution limits? Like, or if we haven't changed something before election or the campaign season really kicks off, like, is there a point where these are set in stone?
So they're set in so, stone when the, the ordinance becomes effective. So if you increase the cap, then at that point, people can contribute more. If you decrease the, the cap, then that's when that goes into effect at that time. Doesn't apply to contributions you received before that.
Okay, so it doesn't matter when they file or when the campaign, like if it changed mid-campaign season? Or like if somebody's already starting to collect contributions now and we change it, is there a point in time where they're kinda stuck in this?
Yes. So if you, if you raise it, then I, then I don't think there's a concern because they would have, even if they had contributed the max at that time when the limit was in place, the limit would be higher so they could contribute more.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion. Yes, just to bring it back, right?
Yeah, to bring it back.
Just the dollar amount.
That's correct.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Just, just to be clear, sorry. The way I wrote it down was is to eliminate the spending limit.
That's, that would be my preference.
Well, that's what.
I thought we'd have to bring that back as an agenda item.
No, correct. But what I'm saying is, is that the specific, the motion that I heard Councilmember Stockton say is, is bring back.
Okay, on the agenda item, it's gonna say, remove it.
To eliminate the spending limit.
As, as at least one of the options, yes.
Now, you just modified.
I think he's just saying, bring it back.
We'll bring back options if that's the will of the council.
Okay, roll call.
Uh, what?
It's my fault. I, I do.
Councilmember Richie, we're doing roll call vote. Or, or do you have a question?
No, we're on the vote.
Was it a public speaker?
Oh, I thought we did. But I'll open it up again. Anybody from the public wanna speak before we go to vote? I'm gonna close public comment.
Councilmember Richie.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roberts.
Just quick, whoever, clarify this.
Just to bring it back.
Just to bring it back.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
No.
Mayor Roulette.
No. It passes though, so we'll have it back.
Can you clarify, so there's three different things we're saying. What is, is the motion to bring it back to kill it? Or is the motion to bring it back to have discussion?
The motion was to bring back for discussion the proposal to eliminate the spending limit on campaign contributions.
You said bring back for discussion. It's bringing back to discuss killing it. Does that matter?
To discuss the proposal to eliminate a limit on campaign contributions.
Still gonna be a discussion. We can do whatever we want next. All right. So we will move to item 10, reports of city manager.
I have none, thank you.
Thank you. Number 11, reports of city council. I'm gonna close it though. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just on record, we had a Pride in the Park on Sunday. It was a really good turnout event. Mayor actually just did his proclamation earlier today, which is awesome. But yeah, it was really, really good turnout, more people there than, than last year. So yeah, I was happy about that. The other thing I have is this Friday, we, the 17th, we have one of the district events, Late Skate, which is keeping the skate park a little bit open for the youth on a Friday evening, give them something to do. It's actually something I pirated from a program I did in high school that somebody ran that let me go out and hang out, do some skating, listen to some music at night, which probably kept me out of some shenanigans on a Friday night in high school. So looking forward to that. There'll be DJ there, be lit up, I'll be out there. Nolan's gonna bring his kids out maybe. So yeah, I'm looking forward to see people out there for that. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Wiley.
We were talking about engaging the neighborhood and I want to say that we had a meeting about South Town Apartments this week and we engaged the neighborhood. It was a Zoom meeting and so there were 75 people who participated and another 450 that signed a petition. But there are still a lot of people that are putting forward, we'd like to have a hybrid choice for city council meetings. So I think that just having 75 people attend, I still think that it's really great if we can sometime in the future, look at hybrid choices for city council again. And then I will also say, I attended Pride in the Park, it was a great event. And I think last time I mentioned that my grant committee had approved some money for Vacaville and it went through the Yolo Solano whole board of directors this past week. And Vacaville will get money to put new sidewalk improvements in Markham neighborhood by the Markham School. So since we were talking about District C, I'm glad, District 3, I'm glad that Yolo Solano Air Quality Management Grant will help there. And also part of a, I think it'll be in District 5, in the Foothill area, it's part of a bike tra, bike trail and some other things. So just shout out to Yolo Solano Air Quality for getting the grants for Vacaville. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, I wanna thank the staff for hanging in here tonight with us, staying awake and answering all our crazy questions.
It's still early.
Well, we're doing okay.
We're doing great. This is the fastest one we've had.
Councilmember Sullivan and I have been working with the Homeless Two by Two and the restructuring of the JPA and, and trying to regionalize our efforts with homelessness. I wanna reiterate, tomorrow we have a Zoom kinda Q and A that I think is really important for the community to be engaged in. We're gonna have some, some good speakers there to kinda discuss it, homelessness on a variety of different levels. And then I felt like it was bad form at the last council meeting because it was too close to Uvalde, Texas, the shooting. But we had an incident that was, that happened at our Fiesta Days. And it was right after the shooting in Texas and everybody was, you know, me included, being in law enforcement, upset with the, the news media, you know, kinda showing that there were law enforcement officers that didn't act or potentially did not act in that active shooter situation, which as a parent bothers me, as a law enforcement professional, it bothers me greatly. But I wanted to recognize one of our own law enforcement officers here in the city of Vacaville. Aaron Love has served this community for several years. He was off duty. Off duty at Fiesta Days and single-handedly acted and tackled an armed suspect. And I couldn't be more proud to have Aaron in our department, to have the brave men and women of our police department that work here that aren't afraid to act when lives are on the line. So, you know, when everybody's kinda worried about, you know, you know, are our police gonna protect us? They're gonna protect us and they're gonna even protect us when they're off duty. And so the culture that we have here in the police department and the love that the, the police have for our community, I thought deserved to be recognized here because that was above and beyond. And I'm, I'm proud that he works for the city of Vacaville. Great, great job, Aaron, you're a hero. And thank you for all your hard work.
Awesome. I didn't know that. Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick thank yous for staff. First and foremost, I wanted to thank Rika and Carson. We had our District 4 event and I might have missed this last council meeting, maybe I didn't miss it, I don't know. But Rika and Carson just did an amazing job with our consultants, Cal Walks, really trying to pour some love into District 4. It was a really eye-opening, kind of hopeful, sort of, you know, interesting experience in District 4. Those kids need some help. Those neighborhoods are, are, they're so, they're so far off and there's so lack of, of resources there. Just, it was a really inspiring day. And Rika is a superstar and Carson, who I just got to meet for the first time, is absolutely amazing. Just awesome, awesome city employees. And Rika also is an avid video game aficionado and she's now my eight-year-old's best friend. So that's, that was interesting as well. So, second thing I wanted to do, really proud of the city and PG&E and Georgianne and Rika again. We got the Hometown Heroes Banner Program literally under the wire. I think we got the six banners up like a couple days before. So the Hometown Heroes Program is back by popular demand, hopefully windproof this time. And I, we literally had an act of PG&E Congress to get the, the banners hung in front of the Memorial Center, so the Vets Memorial Hall. And so, thank you, Councilman Roberts, for your assistance with that as well. But I think that was really special to get done before Memorial Day. I know more to come on the program and some more expansions there, but thank you guys for pulling some late hours and really making that happen and coming through for our veterans. Really excited to see that program back and, and launch. So six months of hard work between us and staff has really paid off. Excited to see that back up and running. Councilmember Stockton mentioned the homeless aspect just a minute ago. Really excited to work with Councilmember Stockton. I think we bring very different approaches to this. And I think, you know, I think that's why it's gonna be effective. I think we're, we're really interested in partnering. I, I really enjoyed getting to know him on this project. I'm very excited for that tomorrow night. And then we also have a county meeting where we're on the Two by Two coming up. I think that might be Thursday? Is that Thursday or is that Wednesday night as well? Wednesday night as well. So we actually have our meeting with all the city council members and the board members to talk about homelessness regionally. So again, kind of a homeless double, double feature tomorrow. And then last, I don't know who the Public Works superhero was, but I've been volunteering with the group that put on the Pride Festival for the last six months to, to launch the event. We've been trying to track down these DARM banners that hang on the poles downtown for Pride. And because of the transition with, with the bid and some other things, couldn't figure it out. And so we had a very tenacious volunteer who wouldn't leave the Public Works office alone. Someone found the banners and miraculously they were up before the event, you know, so huge thank you to whoever figured that out. And then also getting the flag up, just Public Works team really puts in an extra effort. And I know council can be demanding and, and needing things, but thank you for coming through this weekend. It really made the event special to have the banners downtown, the flags up, the park looked great and all that other good stuff. So just a big thank you to those staff making those things happen. I appreciate you guys.
Vice Mayor, you already spoke. I think there's, there's a limit. Go ahead.
Councilmember Stockton reminded me of something. Yeah, regarding the Fiesta Days aspect, when, some emails I actually got before the actual incident occurred was I got a bunch, a lot of emails regarding the, the prizes of toy guns at the, at Fiesta Days, like kids winning them. I got a bunch of emails, be like, hey, there's just a shooting, why are they handing out toy guns? I know a lot of cities actually have toy gun ordinances, they, where they have to be like transparent or bright colored. Does, do we have anything like that in the, in the city or?
I, I don't know off the top of my head if we have anything specific in the city. I'd kinda defer to the police chief and city man.
I mean, might be someone we, we look into for these type. I know Fiesta Days is not a city event, even though most people think it is at this point. But that might be something worth looking into just because it's, since that have happened.
Bring it back on the 28th. I think we got room. Okay. Fortunately, we have a closed session tonight, so we get to go back and have more meeting. I don't believe that we'll be reporting anything out. I keep looking for you over there.
Sorry. No, you're correct.
And so with that, I'm gonna say goodnight Vacaville.